Good evening. I'd like to welcome you and call to order the February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Advisory Committee. And I'd like to read the following statements. This meeting is being held in person in our remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter one oh seven of the Acts of two thousand twenty-two and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with MGL Chapter thirty A, Section twenty F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anybody in the room or online recording this meeting? All right, hearing none and seeing none, I will note for the record that Andy McElany is joining us remotely, and there are two other boards in attendance, and if you'd like to pull your boards to order.
Thank you. Good evening. This meeting of the Hingham. Select Board is called to order. I would note that we are adopting the language articulated by the Chair of the Advisory Committee with respect to the open meeting law and Chapter one oh seven of the Acts of two thousand twenty-two. Participating for the Select Board this evening are myself, William Ramsey, Chair, Board Member Elizabeth Klein, and Board Member Joseph Fisher.
Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the School Committee meeting. I am joined tonight by my fellow School Committee members Ness Corenti, Jen Benham, Carrie Nie, Tim Dempsey, Ally Anderson, and Matt Cosman. We are all here in person, and we are also adopting the language right by the Chair.
All right, the first item on our agenda is comments from the public on items that are not on the agenda. Are there any comments from anybody in the room or online? All right, hearing none and seeing none, we'll proceed to the next item on our agenda, which is to hear a presentation of the school proposed two thousand twenty-four school budget. But before we get there, I'd like to just make a few remarks. First of all, I would like to acknowledge everybody online and in the room that we have received a number of comments from concerned citizens. Those comments are very much appreciated, and we have been distributed to all of the members of the committee. Secondly, after we finish our meeting this eve-- or after we finish our discussion this evening, and after the boards have finished their questioning, I will open up the meeting to comments from the public, either in this room or online. I will set a limited amount of time for those comments, and I would ask that if you are selected to deliver a comment, that you keep your comment to somewhere around two minutes, no more than two minutes, less would be ideal. And please refrain from reading repeated comments that have already been made. And finally, if you are not able to ask a comment this evening, I will remind you that you can send your comments to the Advisory Committee, and our email address is located on the Town website, or you can send comments to the Select Board and on short to the School Committee as well. So with that as a backdrop, I will turn it over to the School Committee.
Thank you very much. As always, Dr. Adams, Katie Roberts, and Ayesha are going to bring us through the fiscal year twenty-four budget presentation, so I will turn it over to the Administration.
So we'll just pull up the presentation. Tonight, we'll provide you an overview of the budget priorities for the schools. We'll also outline some of the current budget drivers that are driving the school budget. We'll give you a brief review of some academic and social-emotional learning data that sort of helps drive some of the priorities of the schools, some financial enrollment data. We'll present information on the three budgets: a level service budget, a balanced budget, and a reduced services budget, and also briefly just outline some unmet needs. Some of the priorities of the leadership team were to sustain current programming that exists within the Hingham Public Schools. We have great variety for our students, that we have lots to be proud of, both that serve the academic needs of our students and the social-emotional needs of students. And in our budget, in our level service budget, we work to sustain much of that programming. An effort has been underway in Hingham for several years to provide a multi-tiered system of support that supports academic and social-emotional needs of students. That includes staffing, includes systems and structures that provide for identifying students who might be struggling, students also who might need additional enrichment, the professional development that supports our students and our teachers in providing those supports, and the high quality in instruction and curriculum that supports that academic and social-emotional needs. In addition, we also want to make sure to invest in our educators so that they have the most recent research-based access to instructional practices and are continually to develop their craft. We know that our students are changing rapidly. The world is changing rapidly around them, and by providing access to our educators to the most current information, we prepare them to better prepare our students. Having access to well-maintained facilities was important, and investing in preventative measures that allow us to keep, upkeep our school buildings, as well as provide access to high-quality technology so that our students can leverage those for learning. In addition, in the background is our strategic plan. We also wanted to continue to further the investment the community made, the schools made, in sort of an outlining a path forward for the schools, which include these five strategic objectives. One around fostering communication, collaboration with the community, and really supportive of trying to build up a community again post-pandemic, to really be responsive to the teaching and learning needs of our students, to provide for healthy and equitable and inclusive learning environments, to invest in the capital needs of building, and have forward-looking plans that address financial needs of the district, as well as invest in the human resources, our staff, and really foster continued leadership development. We had some budget drivers that influenced the cost. We were informed early in the fall that there is a state agency, the Operational Service Division, that sets tuition rates for special education out of district schools. Their estimate was that tuition could increase as much as fourteen percent. For comparison, that tuition increase varied from one point eight seven in some years to as high as two point seven two, so that is a significant extraordinary increase for those tuitions. In addition, we have several contractual bargaining agreements that'll expire in August of two thousand twenty-three. As many of us, we're also experiencing increased fuel costs. Those costs are estimated to double for FY twenty-four. There is, in the strategic plan, the desire to look at reducing and eliminating the full-day kindergarten tuition. We're one of very few districts in the South Shore that still charge tuition for kindergarten, for full-day kindergarten. We also want to invest in continuing to develop our curriculum materials. We are using one-time funds of ESAR to fund a new reading program. The current reading program has a copyright of two thousand fourteen. It's no longer considered a valid research-based program. Many of our curriculum adoptions were put on hold because of the pandemic. We also need a new math curriculum that also hasn't been looked at for several years, so that is an important budget driver for us looking forward. We want to really invest in the best materials for our teachers so that they have the best resources and can invest their time and energies on really meeting the needs of students. Increased transportation costs, also linked to increased fuel, difficulty procuring vans that allow us to provide for the transportation needs of the district, increased difficulty in retaining and recruiting bus and van drivers. As part of the budget, we look to increase fees and increase revenue. Both our level service and our balanced budget include increases in athletics, rentals, activities fees, our after-school programs. There's a strong commitment to the use of our schools. We also want to make sure that our fees cover the costs of utilities and staff time in the school facility's use, so that was part of our budget as well, the consideration of those fees. Our professional development line hasn't been funded. It's been overspent, and we tried to correct that in the level service budget. It didn't reflect our current contractual agreements, specifically around mentoring of new teachers, and it is an area that you'll see in our strategic plan repeated over and over again. It's-- much of it is dependent on continual professional development of our staff, so that was a budget driver for us. We want to just give you a quick snapshot of some academic data and some SCL data that served as a driver also to our budget. I'll pass it on to Katie.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Adams. So for those of you who have been tuning in regularly to our School Committee meetings, you're very familiar at this point with this slide here, which represents our multi-tiered system of support. Just to summarize again for those of you new to the conversation, MTSS refers to a tiered system of support that uses data in progress monitoring to provide students with what they need. It's short bursts of targeted intervention to help students meet proficiency. So pre-pandemic, we expressed the need for a more comprehensive and fully fleshed-out MTSS. Our district has always had components of MTSS but did not have a fully comprehensive system. So at the base of an MTSS system is just very solid tier-one instruction, which is our general classroom instruction. But for those students who aren't quite there yet, not quite meeting those grade-level standards, we need to provide increasing tiers of interventions with increasing intensity. And so previously, we did have some robust tier-three interventions for the students who needed it the absolute most, but it was really those students in the middle that needed just a little bit more that were getting lost in the system that we had before. And so again, this need existed pre-pandemic. It was something that we were messaging and working towards, both in terms of budget and in terms of our systems and structures. And of course, once the pandemic hit, the need for increasing tiered supports became all the more evident. And so over the past couple of years, we have been working towards a fully fleshed-out system, and did want to just share some data in the following slides that tell a really, I think, compelling story of the need for MTSS and what a fully fleshed-out MTSS system can do. So I will be presenting just a very quick snapshot of what is now, I think, an eighty-slide presentation that we'll be giving on February twenty-seventh, so stay tuned, School Committee, for that compelling presentation. But we're going to just share a few slides that, again, tell the story. So pre-pandemic in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, we can see that while many of our students at the middle of the year were making very solid progress towards grade-level proficiency, we have always had students in that red and yellow zone that are in need of some additional focused supports in order to achieve grade-level proficiency by the end of the year. You can see that during that two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year, as is no surprise for this kindergarten cohort in particular, we really fell off a cliff in terms of student need, and you can see that the needs nearly doubled during the pandemic of students in that red and yellow zone, which indicates those students that need a bit more support. And so during that time, recognizing this need, we did add some additional staff, made some adjustments to our schedule, and created additional structures to support those students who needed more. You can see that over the course of the two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two school years, that we have made very steady progress towards returning to where we were pre-pandemic, and in fact, actually inching our students on a bit. So again, this is for our kindergarten cohort that we were most concerned about, the youngest learners. Of course, we're most impacted by the pandemic. And if we go through some of the other grade levels, this is grade one, telling a similar story. Pre-pandemic, two thousand nineteen, making that drop-off and that steady progress back to grade-level proficiency because we have this fully fleshed-out tiered system of support, progressing through grade two, again, showing a similar story. And so this is-- this data here is representing the grade-two longitudinal data over time. This next slide, though, I think tells an equally interesting story. This is going to trace a single cohort of students, so these students would have been kindergartners in that two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. And you can see, again, that red and yellow is very striking, indicating the students who were not-- were in danger of not meeting grade-level proficiency that year. Again, we built the MTSS system and fleshed it out, and you can see the impact that it has had in regaining our students' grade-level proficiency over years. So following this cohort from two thousand twenty, twenty-one, at which we only had about forty-nine percent of our students at that add-or-above benchmark, increasing to sixty-six percent in twenty-one, twenty-two, and eighty-five percent in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. And so again, really illustrating the impact of that system, particularly on our youngest learners. So that data there that I was presenting was an early literacy screener known as Acadian Stibbles. This screener here is for our older children, so that previous screener was targeting those early literacy skills of phonics, phonemic awareness, and so on. For our older students and literacy, we'll be targeting other literacy skills like reading comprehension, vocabulary, morphology, and so on. And you can, again, see similar gains for these students from beginning of year to middle of year. We do not have the same longitudinal data for this metric because one of the things that we added during the fleshing out of the MTSS system was some additional data sources for us to track the progress of our students. So we did have early literacy data going back decades, but for the students in upper elementary for literacy and K to five in math, we really didn't have the same level of screening to help us monitor student progress and to monitor needs. So this is giving you a snapshot for the upper elementary students and their progress in literacy. The next slide gives you a similar snapshot for early elementary math, seeing the progress from beginning of year to middle of year. And so again, we're trying to get all students to green, which indicates on-grade-level And we'll now turn it back to Dr. Adams to share some of the special education data that goes hand-in-hand with our MTSS.
I think it's important to highlight a couple of things. One, MTSS is a best practice. It's not in response-- it is in response to the pandemic, but it's something that is a best practice in order to provide for students' needs. So it's not something I would say, "Well, we're all done, and we can stop." The progress that you see in many cases, to quote Ms. Eastwood at South, Principal at South, she'd say, "The progress we made is because of the investments that were made in staffing and FY twenty-two. We have the staffing we need in order to really influence and impact the students who are struggling." And so to quote her, "We have the staffing. Now, we've built the ship, now we got to keep it going." So much of the progress you see here is because of those resources, in addition to the work that classroom teachers are doing every day with students, in addition to some of this work with staff around looking at the data and understanding the data and being responsive to students' needs. And this is all-- these investments, long-term, impact our ability to also, because you'll see in the next slide, our increase in special education numbers, is we-- when we intervene early, we then have greater impact in long-term in reducing those numbers and really influencing the reading needs of students and the math and social-emotional learning needs of students. So in this slide, you'll see that we're-- go ahead. An increase, we're seeing an increase in our special education students, which is another driver in our budget, as well as the number of 504s. Our Section 504 is focused on students also with disabilities who need accommodations in the classroom. Just one, we've presented some data last week to Advisory, some more detailed data, but we are seeing in our community has been impacted in the last few months with the social-emotional learning needs, mental health needs that are widespread across our nation. And this is just one small piece of data that shows IEP, approximate hospitalizations, and that increase that you see in hospitalizations due to mental health needs. And we'll do some-- a brief review of some financial and enrollment data.
This slide here, what this slide here does is just gives an idea of how our budget is broken down. Eighty-three percent of our budget really consists of personnel costs, and until-- when we get later on into the presentation, when we look at reductions, you will see that we're heavyest-- we are hit heaviest at the personnel level, and that is only a product of the fact that most of our budget is-- really consists of personnel. And in terms of the contractual part of it, which is twelve percent, and the non-contractual of five percent is the area where we have the most flexibility. So the areas that you will see when we get to reductions being hit the hardest are the non-contractual, supplies, textbooks, and personnel, because this is the-- these are the areas where we have that flexibility.
A little snapshot into enrollment. We did see enrollment. We will see that enrollment did decrease because of the pandemic. We hope to have that stabilized. You'll see in the next slide, we do enrollment by middle, high school, and pre-K through five. We do find that our elementary numbers are stabilizing, and we just did our enrollment for February, and we saw an increase in a couple of students at our elementary grade, so we see that sort of stabilizing, and we're working hard to maintain and keep our students through and really showcase all that our middle school and high school has to offer. In addition, we'll just share a little bit about our per pupil in district total expenditures. You'll see data by comparable districts. There's a difference between comparable and benchmark districts. Comparable districts are the ones the state would compare us to. Those are the districts that have similar demographics, similar socioeconomic status factors. You'll see that Hingham is closer to the end. You'll see two numbers in district expenditures. Those are excluding those out-of-district special education costs, and then you'll see total expenditures. This is a per pupil. It is delayed. It's an FY twenty-one data because the state data is delayed a year, so we're waiting for FY twenty-two data to have a different comparison. In the next slide, you'll see a comparison to the benchmark districts. Again, you'll see Hingham down near the lower end. This would not have included those investments made in FY twenty-two or FY twenty-three. In addition, you'll see that our student-to-staff ratio is right in the middle, in line with other comparable districts. This uses twenty-one, twenty-two data, and then it's well with benchmark districts. We're right in the middle as well.
This slide here looks at our revolving funds. For revolving funds, the way they work, based on the description of the fund itself, it can only be used for specific types of activity. So for example, our full-day kindergarten can only be used against expenses for full-day kindergarten. Kids in Action can only be used for that program and any expenses that relate to that program. So this gives an idea of where we are in terms of those funds, and we have budgeted and estimated receipts and expenses for those funds for twenty-three and twenty-four. In terms of the athletic fees, this year, the School Committee made a big investment in tennis courts, and three hundred thousand of our tennis courts that are being updated as we speak, there's work being done on that, came from that athletic revolving fund. This slide here goes-- is a summary of all the grants and revolving funds that we have access to and contributes to our various programming. On the first half, top half of the slide, there are special education grants, whether it be IDA, EEC, and Circuit Breaker, which is the major-- Circuit Breaker and IDA are the main grants that are available to us, and we typically use those grants to fund tuitions. While we-- just like most other school districts, while we had quite a few grants in terms of IDA, ARP funds, and ESAR funds available during the pandemic, a lot of those funds are not available going forward. And as we look at our tuitions and how we can fund tuitions with those increases that are happening, we're also seeing the grant money also reducing as well, which means that there's more that's going to be charged to our operating budget. As part of putting together our budget, one of the things that we did is that we tried to make sure that we met with principals and administrators, other administrators, and we took a deep dive into our budget and looked at areas where we could become more efficient. So what we did here is that we look at the budget and try to find efficiencies within the budget and make reductions or adjustments, I should say, based on those areas where we could be more efficient. Where there were additional needs needed, we also looked at how we could reallocate or use those resources to reallocate funds. So for example, one of the big reallocations that you will see later on as we go through is with our parent educators, where a new teacher was needed for special education, and we were able to find-- to move kids into different classrooms and we adjust the way we structure the classrooms to make sure that we could reduce the number of parents to increase the number of special education teachers. So we, as part of putting together our budget of level services, our level services budget, we tried to make sure that we were finding efficiencies where we could, where we could, reallocate where we could, and then we came up with our level service budget based on our actual needs. Just to go through in terms of what that meant for my elementary, in total, in terms of all our different schools and departments, we were able to reduce the current budget before we got to a level services budget by eight hundred and fifty-five thousand. Those were some of those efficiencies that were made. Those would include some of the things that you would have seen in the past, for example, retirements that would have occurred. One of the big things that happened as well, there was a new app that the Technology Department used where you could actually see the usage of certain programs within the district, and using that software, we could see where the teachers use some of the software, most or least. So we could make some reductions in how much we spent on those apps or programs based on that data that we had available. So that was one of the-- one of those efficiency reductions we were able to make even before we put the level service budget together. In terms of reallocations, we spoke about the paraprofessionals moving from contracted services to an actual speech and language pathologist, where we think that in that-- in terms of that reallocation, what it does is that we can provide more services to our students, even with a little bit of a reduction in the price cost as well. Another thing that we've had, and we've never really quite had at Plymouth River School, was one FTE for the music department, so we were able to reallocate some of those reductions in parent education and speech and language contractual services to make sure that we could make the music department go like PRS and bring it up to one FTE. And that was done through those reallocations. For the facilities, in the Facilities and Maintenance Department, we had a changing staff in this year where our facilities engineer that we hired, we had a little bit of a delta between the old and the new facilities manager, and we're proposing using some of that, these extra funds, to get a licensed straight person or add one more person on staff. So that, again, is just a reallocation that we've done rather than just adding one thing. We're looking at where we can reduce or find efficiencies and then add on based on those Then after we went through this process, we were then able to develop our level service budget that we felt-- that we felt very comfortable and proud of in terms of making sure that it's would meet the the needs of all our students. And and I think that the school committee and 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 the superintendent, Dr. Adams and I and the administration, we're very pleased with the budget that we put together based on that. As all the other departments were asked to do, we put together the level service budget, sorry, and the balanced budget. And we also put together a list of unmet needs as well that we will review with you today as well. So this is the our presentation of the level services budget. What I will do here is focus on the areas where there are significant increases or changes from yet from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four based on the level service budget in the twenty under twenty-twenty-three budget, just to give you an idea as to where those changes have accrued. A lot of what we discuss here is a buildup from what we've discussed before in terms of the main ideas and the main drivers that we discussed earlier in the presentation. I think these are just the numbers that we're matching up with some of those previous conversations. So here we started off with professional development. Dr. Adams spoke very, very well earlier in terms of just kind of describing to us in a very, very deep manner about why we need professional development and why it's important. We put the numbers here to that discussion as well in terms of showing you that in twenty-twenty-two, the actual expenditure for professional development exceeded the budgeted amounts. And in this year in twenty-twenty-four, we're making that whole in terms of bringing that number up to can meet our contractual needs as well as the needs of our teachers and students. In the student activity line, that number goes up a bit. What what we did a little bit different, although it looks like it's a big increase here, it really isn't a big increase. I'm just presenting things a little bit different this year, and I just want to bring that to your attention in that the revolving funds account at the bottom, you'll see the full one point nine million here of the revolving. It doesn't really, some of the numbers in twenty-twenty-three actually reflect net of the revolving. Whereas I can point out to you that, for example, the student activity fund is not. So some of that would be reduced by the the revolving funds in that account as well. One of the other things that we've been working towards as well is trying to improve our collections on this, on that activity fund from how much we collect from our students. And we're seeing more and more over time that a lot of it is being absorbed by the operating budget. And hence, part of that increases because of that. But we're continuing to try to make sure that we can can increase efforts to try to collect those funds from students as well. In terms of heating of buildings, Dr. Adams spoke about the increased costs for heating. One of our contracts this year, we saw that in October of next year, it expires. And the cost of that contract goes up by even, but but by, you know, actually the more than double doubles actually for next year. So that's a big driver because most of our schools are heated by natural gas. Hopefully, by the time we get there, the wind you create is over and we'll all benefit from better gas prices. But we can't, I can guarantee that, so we have to put it into here. Employee benefits and retirement, that reflects some of our employee costs and retirement fees. And the spread programming, the tuition costs here, although Dr. Adams mentioned that it was a fourteen percent increase, what's happening here is because some of our grant money is no longer available anymore, one. And secondly, some of our grant money is being used for other services that we're providing for special education. Less of it is available to be charged to tuitions and hence more of it is is being spent on the operating budget here. So that gives you a summary of just kind of the main areas that we've kind of spoken about before and just kind of put in numbers to those increases. I don't know if, should we pause here for any questions at this point, or is everybody happy and ready to get to the end?
I think we have, like, just a couple more slides on the reduced services, so we'll finish up and then we'll take questions. So for the reduced service budget, just a summer, a quick summary. We want to say that each of what we shared with you is a, each decision we made was a challenging one. Each person, F T E that we talk about is a service that is provided to students and families and staff. So it's extremely challenging. It's been a challenging time in our schools. But we are grateful for the professionalism of our educators who go in every day and do all they can and every day for our students, so we're grateful. So this is extremely challenging and each represents a loss to our community to have these discussions. And if this, if we end up implementing this balanced budget. You'll notice, this is a summary at the elementary, twenty-six F T Es, middle school, thirteen F T Es, high school, fourteen F T Es. Athletics includes a reduction of freshman athletic sports. These are our proposed reductions, including an increase in fees as well. The central office, three point five F T Es, a decrease in curriculum and professional development, reduction of that maintenance tradesperson that we wanted to add. Two F T Es, which are two special education administrators, reduction in technology. The transportation includes providing, putting in a fee for grade seven through twelve for students to ride the bus. I believe we settled on two hundred for that fee to ride the bus. So that's a, to generate that revenue for transportation. So it's it's a total of sixty point six F T Es. That's for, that includes the four million that we know is the budget deficit and approximately eight hundred thousand for unemployment, estimated unemployment that might be needed.
And we kind of mentioned on Monday, on Tuesday during our meeting on Monday, that there is potential for the unemployment to be absorbed. But because that hasn't been voted yet, we still kept those numbers at the four point eight until it becomes actually voted and agreed to. And then we will make the next, take the next step of determining which reductions will be updated. At that point, I will share that with you at the February twenty-seventh meeting.
And then finally, we were asked by school committee to think about what additional needs. And really, briefly, we went back and thought about our strategic objectives for our strategic plan and would outline one, one of those being the continual capital needs of the schools. Much of our capital outlay funding is used for technology, which means there's less for preventative maintenance of our schools. And we all seem to be in a, always in an emergency situation using our operating costs to respond to capital needs and facility needs. So moving or absorbing that three hundred thousand into the operating budget would allow us to really use capital outlay for those capital needs. We're seeing increased needs, medical needs of our students and added a nursing coordinator to help support coordination of medical and nursing needs of of students. We talked about professional development already and that being a central component of the strategic plan. So we continually tried to, you know, I think that's an essential component of the strategic plan that we want to see funded. We did add, the level service budget does include a decrease in the full day kindergarten, not an elimination. But this is the cost of what it would cost to eliminate that full day kindergarten.
Now turn it back to the chair.
Yes, thank you. I did realize that when I introduced the school committee here today, I forgot to introduce Alex at the end, who is filling in for our student representative. So Alex, thank you for being here today. Thank you for the great presentation. Heard it a few times, but it never, it never seeks to shock me what the, what this reduction potential balance budget looks like and the impact it will have on the district. So I guess I will, if you're ready, I'll open it up to question from select board or advisory or comments.
There is so much to absorb that it happens, it's helpful to hear it one more time. I've got one quick question and I will turn it over to the rest of my committee who asked a number of questions. So, Dr. Adams, you mentioned that in the level services budget, there's an allowance for full day kindergarten. How much is that?
The way it works is that we, as part of the, that we, what we saw full day kindergarten is we saw it as something that because we're only one of five districts on the South Shore and one of twenty-five or twenty-six in Massachusetts, that it's one of those things as part of our strategic plan that we should be reducing over time. So as part of this level services budget, we've reduced the kindergarten by five hundred dollars. It's currently at three hundred, three thousand seven, and we brought it down to three point two. So our plan is rather than, although as as part of our unmet needs, we have the nine hundred thousand, which reflects the full cost of the kindergarten, we're gradually looking to, looking, looking towards reducing that over time.
So reduces it by five hundred.
Yeah. Did you want to know the total? Number, so it reduces it by five hundred dollars per student. We don't know exactly how many students yet because registration remains open.
The estimated, yes.
Right. Two, three hundred students, two hundred?
Two hundred, two hundred, two hundred to fifty.
About two hundred, two hundred to two hundred and fifty students.
Right now, it's, this year, it's thirty-seven hundred and thirty-two hundred.
So, yes.
In the level service.
In the level service.
In the reduced budget, it goes up to four thousand.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll ask my colleagues, any questions that were not asked last week or clarifications?
Sorry, I, oh, I do.
Sorry. Me forward.
Something I didn't think of last week that popped up in my head, duty slides today. With the decrease in enrollment numbers, how does that affect the budget? I'm sure it does, I just don't know.
So I, I think the biggest way is that we're seeing, although we're seeing a reduction in in the number of students, overall, we're seeing an increase in special education needs and S E L needs and social emotional needs within the district. That's one of the ways that we're, that's where the increase is coming, mostly coming up in terms of those needs that we're seeing, the tuition and other factors. And we're also unfortunately in an economy right now where costs are not going down. I think that is where that that delta in terms of that increase in 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 our budget is really being driven from. So I think the the key area to look at would be the the drivers of the budget in terms of what's really costing us a lot more this 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 time around.
There's a difference between elementary and middle and high school. In elementary, you can say you have twenty-three kids in a classroom, you need a teacher. And you can sort of make predictions about, at middle and high school, it's really driven by a schedule and the offerings that are offered. And you have to have a seat at every place in a schedule, especially in middle school, to have the kids for safety and security. They need somewhere to be every seven periods. And so it gets a little more complicated so that we've lost enrollment, but it's harder to reduce because you don't, it's not the same as losing twenty-five students. As you saw that our enrollment at elementary is is pretty stable and actually slightly increasing. And we hope that with our kindergarten numbers, we'll see pre-pandemic numbers in our kindergarten as well. And are working hard to sort of promote all that the Hingham schools have to offer to bring those folks back. So it's still hard at the middle school and high school because you have to have a place to put every single kid every period.
And just to bring to your attention as well, that as part of our efficiency changes, there were certain positions that weren't filled because of reduces in in our numbers. So just to make you aware of that as well, part of that eight hundred thousand that you see in terms of overall efficiencies includes some of those positions that just, which doesn't fill after people retired or left.
As a district, we don't get because the numbers have gone down. Does it impact the budget badly?
There are two areas that may be impacted. Chapter seventy funding may maybe impacted. And where we've seen a reduction in Title One funding and Title Two funding, it's not direct. Title One is not directly in terms of numbers as a whole, but in terms of the socioeconomic numbers of our district, where the 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 D S E, D S E looks at our poverty numbers. And because the poverty numbers in Hingham has decreased over time, which is a good thing, that means people are doing better, right? Then we've lost some of that funding as well.
I just had a question about kindergarten. So a half-day kindergarten is free, is that true? Okay, so what percentage of parents elect full-day kindergarten, which they pay for versus going to have?
Students last year, and by the time, two students elected for half-day last year. And before the year was over, we had probably one.
Because they see all the fun that they're ha, all the other kids are having and they've got to leave when it's lunchtime and playtime and they say. They say, I want to stay, and so they eventually, you know, the parents change.
Right.
So basically, every kid is doing.
Exactly.
Basically, yes.
And paying for.
Yes. And just to give you an idea as well, we also have a sliding scale as well. So that based on the income of parents, they fall on a certain, they pay a certain amount of the tuition. As you can imagine, there are not many people who fall within those lower brackets. But we do have a few families that benefit from that, those adjustments as well.
And out of the four towns on the South Shore, that also in the same situation, also do charge for kindergarten are of the wealthier towns on the South Shore. And then the, I think it was Whitman, Whitman Hampton, they just recently started paying for full-day kindergarten. And the main driver behind that was because they only had sixty, sixty-two percent participation in full-day kindergarten. Participation when it was, when it wasn't free. I think it was either last year or maybe it was two years ago, they switched to.
I was reflecting on the same question that Sarah had. We had a citizen share a letter with us asking about the whole ratio of students reducing over time and the cost per student. But I did think it was interesting looking at the metrics that you shared, that the real reduction was really between twenty nineteen and twenty, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one year. And the metrics you were sharing on the cost per student were twenty twenty-one, that put us like right in the middle. So when I was thinking about like the twenty twenty-one versus today and the increase, like the the reduction of students was only about a hundred, right? So it just, it almost seems like, like where we are today at the average cost per student. My point is, the reduction is like before that time period. So if you were to go back, you would be at a much less average cost per student.
Yes, yeah, so.
Pre, previous to the pandemic, the per pupil spend was much lower.
Yeah.
Did we see those metrics before, or is this some new information? All right, so this is like, we're basically on par.
And even with the increased spending that we're seeing now, across the 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 state, most other districts also received S F funds and other funds and invested a lot more into their schools as well. So we haven't seen those numbers, new numbers yet for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three is still going on now, but for twenty-two, but we don't anticipate any big huge swings in any other direction.
I think it's, when I think about it, the number seems stark, nearly, I think, five hundred student decline in enrollment, which is about nine percent. But it is across thirteen grades or thirteen grades, K through twelve, and then across six buildings. So when you sort of break it down and then inside those buildings, there's four or five sections. So it's really a handful or less of children in the elementary level, sort of at each grade level or each classroom. So it isn't like, oh, we've lost as many students, we could eliminate these many positions because it just lowered, it just improved the student-teacher ratio and not significantly. I think we were fourteen to one and now twelve to, twelve to one. So it wasn't a huge shift in the student-teacher ratio and the per pupil spend. We're still directionally where we were. So, it wasn't a huge shift in the student-teacher ratio and the per people spend, we're still directionally where we were before.
Bill, I'm not seeing any hands, Andy is online, but I don't see his hand up, so I'll turn it over to you and your board.
Great, thank you. So, I guess I'll start off a couple of questions. So, it's great to see the grade level efficiency increase. I know that two years ago, when we voted for the additional F T Es and to increase the budget, the drop-off, the learning loss was a big driver for my vote, and I think my colleagues at the time shared the same sentiment and voted for the increase. So, how is that assessed? Is that assessed solely through M C A S?
M C A S is one metric, however, that gives us just a single snapshot at the end of the year. We use other metrics, including at early elementary for reading, we use an early literacy screener known as Acadia's Dibbles, that's a nationally-normed assessment for grades three to five reading. We use what's called an eye-ready diagnostic, and similarly for K-five math, we use an eye-ready diagnostic. And again, the early learners are the ones that we were most concerned about with the pandemic learning losses, and are the ones that we have been actively gathering data on, progress monitoring and so on.
And Katie, is it, is it math and literacy the two main metrics that drive that?
Yeah, so when we're speaking of M T S S, we're primarily speaking of the foundational skills of reading and mathematics. And M C A S science is also assessed, but science is generally not considered part of that M T S S structure, which is really focused on those foundational skills of literacy and math.
That M C A S has seen a often called a summative assessment, because it's at the end, right? What we were sharing with you, we call formative, because we can do it in time and then be, respond. But we don't have to wait till the end of the year and get M C A S a year later, have, you know, the next school year. So, the data we're sharing is real data, teachers see it, and they can change their practice and respond immediately. And so, that's why you see the growth from beginning to middle of the year and not waiting for that M C A S. And so, that's some of the structures that have been put into place this year, in addition to the staffing put into place in F Y twenty-two, so that we're more responsive to student needs and more flexible, because we're immediately using that data to make changes. Both teachers are making changes in their classroom, and the interventionists are supporting and making changes immediately, because I can say, you need to work on your multiplication facts, and you can say, you need to work on that twelve table, and we can immediately give you support to do so, and we can be responsive. And so, that's kind of the difference that you see in the data. We could share M C A S data, but that's old. This is really recent and more immediate, and we can respond immediately, so that's the difference.
Well, it's great, again, it's great to see the increase, to see we're, we're back to where we were two years ago. The other question I've got is the unmet needs budget and the additional request for the nursing coordinator. It's my understanding that some of the departments at the, at the high school, like they wear two hats, like the math, I'm sure Mr. Jewett, he teaches in addition to being the math department head. I know Mr. Kerkaldi used to do both, I'm sure that the current history department head does the same thing. Have you considered giving additional compensation to an existing nurse, nurse and ask them to do more, take on more responsibilities and save the money of adding the new F T E?
Yeah, that's a possibility, one of the things that we're challenged to do is find subs. So, when a, a nurse is out, so this nursing coordinator would help coordinate the nurses, but also serve as a sub when someone's out, so that they could be able to be responsive immediately, they could support. We al, we also get subs to support screening that's needed, so that someone's covering the nursing aspect, aspect, and then doing screening as well. So, this would be someone who is flexible, you know, doing hands-on with nurses, but also supporting the coordination they need, the professional development they need in order to better meet students' needs. So, five, you'll see a number of those five oh fours are increased, some, some of those are significant medical needs that require coordination and support, so that's the intent. If we have to do that, I mean, we'll, we can be creative, as we've been. We do have a nursing coordinator, someone who gets a stipend, but they're also a full-time nurse. They're a full-time nurse in their school building, and they're getting a small stipend to do some coordination. But it's challenging because you're trying to do your job every day and also do some of that work, so that was the intent of that.
Great, well, thank you, I'll turn to Liz, see if she has any questions.
Sure, thank you, thank you, it was a great presentation, I have seen it multiple times. But great job, and I appreciate you presenting all the data and being so transparent with the data and the revolving funds, and that it's really helpful just to understand all of that. I had a question about the, the number of students on I E Ps and five oh fours, what do you think is driving that, the, the drastic increase?
I think the pandemic, you know, had a great impact on that, as well as the need to develop that M T S S. That work started several years ago, folks recognized the need to create immediate responsive supports, the need to have data that allows teachers in schools to be responsive. I also share, in addition, principals are looking at that data and saying, where are the places I need more support? Where are the places teachers might need more support? And using it, where is, where are places we're looking at at the curriculum level to say, where is the curriculum perhaps not responsive to students' needs? So, it has multiple, so we're using the information to really support a cycle of improvement, as well as consider how we're better meeting the needs of those students. I think there is an increase in social emotional needs of students, and more anxiety among our young people. I think technology hasn't helped in some cases, that the communication skills of our students who are younger, we're often relying on devices with our young people and instead of lots of talk and conversation, and I think we're seeing that. I think every district across the nation is probably seeing increased needs in their early childhood programs, because of increased needs just in general of young people as well. So, I think it's threefold, that's a long answer to say, the pandemic has an influence, I think there are increased social emotional needs, and also among our youngest learners, we're seeing increases in early childhood. And third, our, our need to be responsive and create an M T S S responsive program that meets immediately students' needs as early as possible, and not have special ed be the game when your kid is struggling. I think it's those three things.
Okay, so, so are we identifying children earlier that maybe we were missing before the pandemic? Or before we, certainly before we had M T S S or the right number of resources?
That could be part of it, yes.
Okay. And then five, I know you mentioned, obviously, we know there's social emotional needs across the community, and I think anxiety now qualifies for a five oh four, is that, is that right?
Yes, it could, it could, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Oh, okay, okay. Because I know, you know, I was asked a question by a parent, you know, co, the pandemic or learning loss doesn't cause a learning disability, which is a true statement, right, but there's other things going on here that is driving these numbers, it seems.
Just briefly, the difference between a five oh four and an I E P is whether or not the curriculum material needs to be modified or adapted for the student.
Yeah, if the student needs specialized instruction, then they get an I E P, and five oh four is just accommodations.
So, a disability does not guarantee an I E P or a five oh four if you do not need modifications or accommodations to the curriculum.
Okay, okay.
So, it's the need, not the label, that gets the service.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Joe? Yes, thank you for the presentation, and I do want to acknowledge something, there's a longstanding Hingham tradition that students in the middle of winter will walk around in shorts. And I see it's been honored here, it's a warm day, but I do see that you're honoring that tradition, so, so thank you. I want to turn to a couple of topics. One is a topic that I heard a lot of in prior years, and one that I personally am interested in, which is the music program. And there was comments from parents, I don't know if it's last year, the year before, making sure that the music program at school is supported. I'm wondering if you view that program now is supported, and where is it in the budget? Because I, I'm not sure I could really locate it.
So, in the, do you mean in the level service or the balanced budget, or reduced services?
Uh, uh, level service.
The level service, the level service maintains our music programs as they are, maintains our director of fine arts. Ms. Bellis has been, our director of fine arts, has been an enormous contributor to strengthening and developing our arts programming. We saw a drop in enrollment during the pandemic in our music programs and arts programs, something about doing music virtually that just doesn't, you know, it's not the same, or doing drama, or doing visual arts. And so, she's been instrumental in building up that program and really creating opportunities for students, several grants that she's written, so she's an important part of that. Versus the balanced budget impacts that position, that director, a proposal is to eliminate that position, as well as institute a fee for grade five instrumental music. The, it's a hard decision for us to make, but as we started to get into sixty F T Es, we then made a decision, do we have another F T E that we're eliminating, or do we institute a fee for that program? So, not a good choice, a hard choice for us to make.
It's a very hard choice, yes.
But, and it's a wonderful opportunity for our students to be able to engage in fifth grade, in band, in orchestra, or chorus, and really develop a strong, a strong opportunity to appreciate music and the arts in fifth grade, that carries interest further for some students into the middle school and high school.
Absolutely.
So, it, it was a hard choice for us.
Thank you. You've heard some questions about enrollment and the decline in enrollment, and I've heard responses that the school committee or the schools in themselves are looking to reverse that. It wasn't clear to me exactly what steps are being taken, and it also, it wasn't clear to me exactly what your projection is for enrollment next fiscal year and the year after that, if you have those.
Yep, we have some enrollment data from the M S B A project foster that was some projection data. It shows the projection increasing. I think the variable that probably the M S B A and those projections didn't account for was the pandemic in the middle of that. We need to do a better job of sharing and shouting from mountaintops, all the great things that are happening, the unbelievable opportunities that kids have at our middle school, to walk into that tech ed classroom at the middle school and at the high school, and see students have opportunities to use problem-solving, craftsmanship, creativity is absolutely amazing. The arts programs and the opportunities that start in kindergarten and go all the way up is amazing. It rivals any opportunity that students would have at a private school. The opportunity to engage in sewing and family consumer science, but then also go off to a high-quality rigorous English curriculum at the same time is amazing. The world languages that we have and offer, and the opportunities for Chinese as early as now in our middle school is absolutely outstanding, and we need to do better to shout that from the mountaintops. We've been doing some social media, using every avenue we can, going back to in-person program. Promote what the schools have to offer.
Is there any item in the budget that addresses marketing or the promotions that you're talking about?
The district last year invested in a communication specialist, and she is working hard to do that work with press releases and trying to use all the media we can to really promote that, and trying to come up with creative ideas to, to do that. And our next sort of venture is how do we also engage our middle school and high school students in some of this work? I think they could be great promoters, they're, they know how to use social media, and they, we need their help in sort of promoting. Because I think their voice, talking to other students, could be very powerful, their messaging. We've been targeting, we've been targeting parents and adults, and I think we also need to target our kids too, because they have a voice also in where they're going, and I think that needs to be one of the next things we really tackle. One of the things that we've been, sorry.
I was just going to add, there's, I can't remember the name, but the pilot that Rick Swanson is going to do at the high school to focus on like a mini minor or a major for pathways.
Yeah.
Pathway, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, so we also, in the program of studies, we've had a long, it's called the Global Citizen, Global Citizens pathway, that you can participate as a sophomore, it's kind of like having a major or minor. You kind of take a certain set of courses, and you say you're interested in global studies. There's a project associated with it. We're trying to also institute next year an arts pathway for kids who are interested in the arts, so creating a community within the school, within a big comprehensive high school. If you're interested in the arts, take this pathway and it'll show up on your transcript. In a very competitive college environment, when you provide, this is a way for our kids to sort of stand out. Here, you've participated in an arts pathway, you participated in a, a technology education, a tech ed pathway.
Because that's the second, that's the other pathway.
That's the second one, and potentially a STEM pathway in the future, is a way to sort of say, stand out on your transcript in a world where the college environment is extremely competitive. So, how do we provide those opportunities for kids within the comprehensive high school?
And then, getting back to the first part of my question, i, is there someplace in here where you have your projection for enrollment for next year?
Not in here, no, we'd have to put that together for you. The most recent enrollment that work that's been done, enrollment projections, has been as part of the M S B A. I'm not sure the information, because of the pandemic, would be as useful.
But what we have done though, is in terms of looking at October, October numbers, October one numbers of, of this last year, twenty twenty-two, and use those projections to budget for twenty-four. And that's, for example, for kindergarten, what our fees would be, and, and all these other fees or, or costs that relate to, to enrollment, where we go back to the October one numbers to determine those, those numbers as well. In terms of looking at it from a long-term perspective.
I'm, I'm just thinking, I, my assumption is when AdCom is looking at the budget, they're going to be looking at it relative, relative to projected school enrollment. And so, if that number is not here, I'm, I'm not sure how that evaluation is going to go.
Right.
Right, you've got three hundred twenty kids that are graduating, we're assuming, you know, I don't know for sure, but.
Right, so, yeah, so in terms of that, sorry.
Okay.
In terms of that, we're using the, those October twenty-one, oh, October twenty twenty-two numbers, as of October one, twenty twenty-two, to say that we expect our enrollment to be basically the same for next year, yeah.
And I think if the level services budget is, it's built around that, those assumptions, but if one hundred, two hundred, three hundred students would come back, we would, we will come them back, and it would not change this, these numbers, we would be able to absorb them back, because again, as we were saying earlier, that these are across, you know, thirteen grades in six different buildings. So, it wouldn't be suddenly, oh, my gosh, we're going to have to hire fifteen new teachers, because, because two hundred students came back.
But you'd have additional state revenue coming in.
And you may have more state revenue, yes.
I mean, there is a, we can, yeah, there's a delay in our chapter seventy funding, but we can make the assumption that from the federal government, there likely is not more funding coming, we can probably assume that. Where, it's unclear at the state level what's happening, we have a new governor, a, a new session, they're organizing themselves. It's unclear what will happen at the state, we're hopeful that the new governor and with state revenues, that perhaps there might be increases in chapter seventy, but it's unclear at this time what, what's going to happen at the state level, we're hopeful.
Yeah, but the, the revenue that's determined on a formula basis, that would, that would increase.
Yes.
No other questions, thank you.
I think that's, you bring up a great point though, Joe, I think that, I think that's why the level services budget and this override getting approved are so important to the district and to the community, right? I mean, with, looking at. Right, I mean, with, looking at sixty-one FTE reduction and over the last couple of years, we've added thirty-three, thirty-four. I mean, you're talking almost thirty additional positions being cut. And that's just devastating to the, the community, I think. And I think that's what, I mean, it just, the enrollment would, you know, people left because of the pandemic. They had means to leave and go to private schools. And I think we would just continue to see that, um, impact the schools. And just as proponents of public schools, that would just be devastating to, again, to the entire community, not just the students and the staff, but just everyone who lives here.
Certainly during the pandemic, people left Hingham schools because they weren't satisfied with the product they were receiving during the pandemic. I think there's been a lot, you've heard, uh, about the communication with parents that's improved with the new, uh, communications director. You've heard about the MTS, uh, MTSS system, which, you know, the old Hingham story where the kids who are highest and lowest achieving get well-served and the kids in the middle get lost. I don't think that's a true story anymore with MTSS that really works to capture the needs of all of the students in Hingham schools. So I think there's been a huge effort to improve the product, uh, that we are offering to parents as well as communicating that product out to families who have left. But unfortunately, if you left during the pandemic, you're now a, you know, potentially a junior senior in high school. You're not going to come back before graduation. It's really a long-term plan to get kids back as they're entering elementary schools. So I think it probably makes a lot of sense to look at the elementary and kindergarten numbers.
But I think also you do have those natural sort of progression years, right? So if you left in third grade and you're wrapping up fifth grade, you might come back from middle school, right? Or you went six, seven, eight, somewhere else, not, now maybe you're coming back to the high school. And that's what we are really hoping to see. I mean, we have so much to be proud of in our schools. There is amazing work being done, um, the new programs that are being offered. It's just, it really is, um, they're fantastic years ahead for the schools. Really, we are really just, I think, on the precipice of, um, just really making this just an even better school district than it was before. Even at level services without even adding more to it.
And, and the flip side is with the reduced services, what effect will that have on our enrollment?
Right.
Which is, will be, could be devastating.
I, I think the, the reshow loss of funding, we've already seen it once. That could spiral and just get worse.
With another, as an exit, because we don't have the positions, the gap within our school, the, the kids who have the means to go to private school, we're seeing more and more. What does that say for our town?
I was just, I didn't know if you wanted me to recognize or if you wanted to recognize.
To the enrollment point, I was wondering, so I have a second grader who's in that class that we see a lot of data about because they started kindergarten, um, in that year. And that class is small. I'm wondering, are you seeing kindergarten increases even this year beyond, you know, what we saw in that year where a lot of families opted both, I think to, I think a lot of people went elsewhere for kindergarten and then some people came back for first and second, but not in the numbers you would expect? Are we seeing like a course correction in the new kindergarten enrollment?
It's very incremental, it's still early to tell, to give you kindergarten enrollment data, because that.
What about for this, for twenty, what about for like the twenty twenty-two year where we have sort of a fully normal year? Did we see people opt in, in more his, historically reflective numbers for our kindergarten program?
It, it, it was more consistent with previous numbers. What we're seeing now is I, we just got February enrollment numbers and we saw an increase of five students at our elementary. So it's kind of like this incremental, kind of incremental increase. What will, what will start after February break is, um, sort of social media trying to promote, hey, if you have a grade one through twelve student, we're ready. Registration's open, fill out paperwork, um, we have a seat for you. So we're gonna start promoting that, um, after break. Um, that parents know that, um, we're open for enrollment for next year. Um, and try to bring those families back, um, as much as possible.
Andy has a, uh, a question.
Yeah, I have, uh, uh, one question about enrollment and then two related questions about the budget. First was regarding to enrollment, uh, and obvious difference between private and public school. Is that a private school decides to advance how many students it will accept? And presumably, it's a, a sweet spot. And then, okay, we can, uh, do our best and obviously, let's say, two hundred and fifty students or a thousand students. And then accepts that many and then, uh, doesn't take the rest. Obviously, a public school, everybody who shows up at the door. And I just wonder, before you start marketing to increase enrollment, what is the benefit to the town of increasing enrollment? And do you, do you know what the sweet spot is in terms of your ideal enrollment to maximize the benefit of education for all the students who do that?
That's a tough question. No one's asked that before.
I sort of feel like, I mean, the sweet spot to maximize the education for all the students in this town is to bring all the students into the schools. Because we think we have the best product.
It's amazing that you could bring in all the students. I mean, you have limited resources. And so there's, you know, there's a number of students that you can provide maximal benefit to. And, uh, you know, I, I understand what, what you're saying from a sort of psychological perspective, but, but facial perspective, I don't.
Yeah, the, um, the private school enrollment, um, data shows that about ten percent of students were, um, accessing private schools in Hingham pretty consistently for the last, um, fifteen years of data. So it's been pretty consistent during the pandemic, it dipped to twenty percent. And so we know pretty consistently, we've been servicing ninety percent of the students um, in the town previous to the pandemic. Not quite the answer you were looking for, but it's, it's what the historical data would say.
You know, you know, issue.
It would be interesting to know what, what, uh, Hingham's, the ways the sweet spot is, but let me move on. The, with regards to the budget, uh, the revolving funds, that I got the units of the budget increased from just under five hundred thousand to just under, uh, two million. Is that a, is a one point nine figure used this year? Or, or a card number, or is that a, uh, enlarged one five?
So in terms of the revolving funds and the use of that, um, this year, we have increased our use of the revolving funds. And we've also increased fees along with that as well. So the plan is to continue to have that increase as well as time goes by based on the revenue and receipts of the revolving fund. So these are just estimates in terms of that. When we get actuals in, we can provide a more clear answer in terms of what has actually been received and what can actually be, um, um, put against the budget. But that is a plan to continue to do that, yes.
Do you have any sense of what the number would be going forward?
So in terms of that, um, I, I don't want to like predict and then, and then you run the tapes next year and say, I didn't do the right thing. So I want to make sure that whatever I say, it can be held true, right? It is an estimate.
My point is, you, you projected a level curve as a five point one, four percent increase over last year's budgets, and that, did I read that right?
That's right, thank you.
And the sustainability budget task force recommends that going forward is going to increase no more than three point five percent annually. Is that something that the committee could live with going forward? That, that is, that being a three point five percent annual increase?
I think that will, I mean, it will depend on a lot of factors, including, um, whether or not we start the year with level services funding or not, right? Because if we have a bigger net number, dollar number to begin with, then it's a little easier to stick with the percentages. I mean, we are open to, you know, I mean, I understand that there is potentially discussion about, um, entering into a memorandum of understanding that we will endeavor to maintain services between three and a half and four percent, um, but I don't think we've landed on what that, what that number will be.
I think you have to remember there's, remember those significant budget drivers that are driving the budget, um, this year. Those special education tuition costs, um, those, um, fuel costs. I mean, we're all dependent on the economy around us. And so the schools' personnel costs, we're seeing that in every economic sector, we're seeing personnel costs, um, increase. So we're dependent on some of those economic factors in that increase, um, that you see in the budget. We're trying to do two things with the revolving funds. We're trying to create new programming so that we can, um, sustain and build those revolving funds. Um, and second, we're increasing the fees. And we intend to monitor really closely those fees and the collection of them so, um, that we're able to maintain the service, like we're maintaining, we're not using our operating costs to cover, um, those additional programs. So we're, we're doing those two things, creations of programs and really increasing fees and monitoring their collection.
Yeah, if I could just add to eighty-three percent of our cost of personnel. And we are currently in, in negotiations with all six bargaining units. So once those are set, we'll have a lot more information as far as what the costs will be going forward.
But if you want to sign a hope, the fourteen percent increase in out-of-district tuitions, much of that is reimbursed through the circuit breaker money. Uh, and that money is reimbursed a year after the fact. So that if, if, if the money goes, if the tuitions go up fourteen percent this year and that's a stabilizing and they continue at that rate, then it will be a one-year disruption of our budget.
Right, and seventy percent of that would be reimbursed.
Seventy percent.
I, with regards to the fourteen percent, that's like the state average, obviously. Do you have any sense of what the increases, actual increases are likely to be in the schools that, that you will use?
It's not a state, it's not a state average.
It's not, it's not an average.
Right.
It, the, the state sets the, the state sets the fee. And, and just, just to give you an update on that.
I'm sorry, I gotta hear you.
The state sets the fee, so it's not an average, it will be fourteen percent. The state has signaled that the increase that they are going to put through for out-of-district tuitions is going to be fourteen percent.
And we've actually received those tuition rates right now.
Yep.
And they are at that, at that level.
I think the point of confusion is that when a private individual is paying their own way, goes to a private school, they pay whatever tuition the private school wants them to pay. When some, a public school system sends someone to an out-of-district placement, that rate is set by the state.
Those, at every, every tuition at every school will be raised by fourteen percent?
Private, specialization schools.
Private and residential schools will be raised by fourteen percent. We do have, for example, um, some of our students go to other public schools, um, other collaboratives. And for those, we're, we're not seeing a rate up to fourteen percent, these rates are lower. Um, and in terms of our budgeting, that we've used five percent as that threshold for those particular schools. Um, hopefully those come in lower, but we haven't received all of those fees as yet. So the collaboratives, um, the other public schools, those would be lower than the fourteen percent.
Does that make sense, Andy?
Um, yeah, so I guess the, the, we don't know yet what the actual increases will be for our out-of-district students, right?
Well, we do.
We do. It's gonna be fourteen percent.
Andy, I think I heard, I used to say that they have already received some of those numbers and they are at the fourteen percent level. So it would seem as though fourteen percent is, is, was an accurate number.
It's not the news that I want to give either, Andy, but it is what it is, right?
Is that it, Andy? Do you have another question?
Yeah, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, I do.
I just had a clarification question that I don't know why it just occurred to me tonight, Katie. The MTSS, is that a, an elementary system?
It, it is a K eight system and, and it does continue through the high school, but really the emphasis in terms of.
Pandemic learning loss and such, we were very focused on our most vulnerable students, which were our youngest learners. So the data that we've been most closely monitoring are for, um, the, our youngest learners who were most impacted by the pandemic.
So, I mean, so in parts of it may still exist in middle school and high school, but it goes to your statement that, that you really want to focus on.
In terms of our investment and.
It's kind of like occurred to me that it's something that you said, that it was an elementary school program, but it.
The data presented tonight is just to tell, yeah, to tell, that's right. And one other thing just to note is that MTSS, tonight we were presenting the academic data. MTSS also refers to social emotional needs. So there's in parallel with the academic, um, structures and staffing. In the other hundred slides, yeah, so.
The, the social emotional screening that goes K twelve, doesn't it?
So yes, we have di- different, different screeners at, at, at different levels, yes.
But this is the MTSS for social emotional does go through twelve.
Yes.
George, I have a quick point I wanted to add, something that Tim had said, I just wanted to back it up. So I had a meeting last week with, uh, Joan Mustino, a state rep. And I'd asked her, after discussions with Dr. Adams, uh, to consider, um, supporting some state funding to help towns bridge the one year that Tim is referencing, um, to get through that fourteen percent year for next year. She said she'll look at it. She also said that all of her communities have been asking the same question. So, um, every town, I think, is asking for the state to come in and help bridge that year. So hopefully that happens too.
Uh, I just have one final question on the strategic plan. Correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding, one of the objectives of that plan was to look at the services that are being delivered and the way that they're being delivered and maybe to look at best practices and that sort of thing. Uh, just wondering if any of that information came out in the plan?
So we're engaging in three processes right now, um, that I think will, the strategic plan is, is broad in some places. So partly in there you'll see, um, developing a technology plan, which is a best practice for school districts. You'll see many districts have a technology plan. So we're undergoing that process right now. Part of that process, as Ayesha said, is looking at, um, the computer programs, the instructional programs teachers are using. What is actually the usage of them, what's the cost of them? How are student, how many students are accessing them and is, is it cost efficient? Um, so that's the whole process we're going in right now. That plan will be, all of these plans are coming at the end of the year, um, after this budget cycle. So they really will inform really next year's budget. Another plan that's best practice is having a professional development plan that will really outline and deepen some of what's in the strategic goal and have really specific goals and action steps that we're taking. So that's a process that's going on right now. We're also engaging in an equity audit that will help us think about how we're providing for equity and inclusion um, in our schools. And so that also is a process we're going through. And all of that comes later on in the year, so it really informs the next budget process. The strategic plan, we present, we presented an update to the school committee this, I think it was this week. So it's an evolving document. And so you'll, uh, Monday, we presented much of the stuff that we've been doing to sort of meet those goals. In the summertime, we'll, as a leadership team, we'll look at those goals and revise them and say, uh, do we, have we met some of them, we're gonna exceed and go beyond? And some of them will, um, still be struggling to, to make progress towards. And that's sort of the work that's, that cycle of continuous improvement is how do we move forward in this particular goal? How do we need to revise it or change it? And those that we exceed, we just keep saying, hey, what's the next step? Um, and so that's kind of the work that's happening. We're in year one and I'm very proud of all that we've already accomplished. And we still have, I think, about seventy more days of school, or maybe eight, seventy-five-ish to go and I'm proud of what we've accomplished.
And I can, um, forward you the update, um, to the advisory committee and the select board, if you'd like, that, um, the administration gave. We were all very pleased and, um, also proud of the work that has been.
of the work that has been completed to date in just that first year. Yeah, we've seen some great progress.
I have a question, but I think it's so hypothetical, but I don't even know if it's a logical question. So, so let me start with. So I'm imagining that if, so we hired these additional educators because we had tremendous learning loss when we moved to virtual and online learning for such a long period of time. And if we hadn't had the pandemic, and we hadn't moved to online learning, but we had still hired these additional educators, then do we believe we're going to have improved educational outcome and achievement to our students that we're going to be able to show and prove?
Absolutely, yes. Hundred percent. Yeah. And I do think that, because I'm glad you asked a hypothetical question that ended up having an actual answer to it. But I think the other thing too, and I know this comes up a lot, that the positions were added to deal with the learning loss from the pandemic. But many people in this room were here, as long as I've been here, that actually, some of those positions were presented prior to the pandemic because there were sections, there were populations in the schools that were not meeting, and there were large gaps in learning loss isn't the right word, but there were huge learning gaps between special education students and other populations of students that we were trying to address. And that, I think, informed some of the budget decisions just before the pandemic.
And all the students in the middle, you know, the ones that aren't the high achievers or the kids in special.
MTSS was started prior, and the work on that was started before.
Maybe questions and confusion on that, or when we look at the slides, what we see the extra positions doing so far is like bringing back to baseline, and so it almost feels like the answer to the question isn't quite there yet until there's a year or two more if we continue to see like valuable returns on these positions. So I assume that's something that you'll keep monitoring to show us if there continues to be that kind of, you know, returns on these investments.
The exciting thing about it too is that even from the beginning of the school year, when kids came back from the summer break to now, we're seeing such improvement just in terms of that timeframe, that is very exciting to see what comes next.
We can't wait to present, we're gonna present middle of the year, at the end of the month, but we can't wait to show what the students accomplish by the end of the year. Full academic year, pre-pandemic, post-pandemic, we can't wait.
I just want to steal Katie Roberts' words, but as she mentioned to Ellie the other night, the goal of public education is to get to one hundred percent, our effort level. So you can see, even from pre-pandemic, we were very far from that, and so that is the goal, and that is what we're aiming for.
I think that would be awesome, where you start, go down, and then come back.
Up to similar-ish numbers, but to see that, you know, the red and yellow continue to shrink.
And I think the heart of your question is, are we building the infrastructure to really be able to look at that data?
Like, is this the right infrastructure to do? It was certainly the infrastructure to help crack pandemic learning loss, I think it's just we haven't seen the answer to the question yet in the data, is it the right infrastructure to continue?
Right, and there's the extra teachers, the infrastructure I'm talking about is that we have a data team in the district that meets monthly to go over all this data. We have an educational programming subcommittee of the school committee that looks at this data, in addition to the iReady and all the sort of programs and the formative assessments that we're doing on students. Now we have a very strong set of beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year data for all students, so, which is significantly more robust.
I'm just, I'm really enjoying reading all the letters from the citizens that have been sent to us, I think they've been super helpful, so I'm saying, keep them coming, I don't know if others. The one that really hit home was again, from a citizen who was talking about other areas of increasing revenue funding, for lack of a better word, this resident mentioned the Hingham Sports Partnership, which is voluntary and citizens contributing to that, and was curious, are there other type of areas within the school that we see that similar type of contributions, or are there different areas where that could be another place to?
There's a lot. We've got the PTOs, the Hingham Education Foundation, which, I mean, they at one point did two-hundred-and-fifty thousand contribution to kindergarten, computer science program, the Hingham Arts Alliance is a new group that started to support the arts in the school.
All the boosters.
All the booster organizations, so.
But there is a line that you can cross. Yeah, I think that the heart of it is, they are supplementing in their group that should be, in addition to what a public education already provides, not providing what our budget should be providing.
Right, and we know that when you cut things in the budget, it becomes a parent tax, that parents are paying for tutors and all this other, all these other services that the schools use to supply, and I think right now, it's, just a side note, the CPAC, the Special Education Parents Advisory Council, has a survey out that's trying to capture the numbers of what specifically special ed parents are having to spend out of their own pockets to supplement what their kid needs, kids need, so that'll be an interesting set of data to look at with that.
And to Ellie's point of what there's a line you can't cross, I was the PTO president at one of the elementary schools, and the principal asked the PTO to provide speed bumps. That's not something the PTO should be providing. I hope the concrete ones are the parent parents. We didn't, we just said no.
So I'm going to open it up and take some questions from the audience here. As I said at the beginning, we'll set aside a few minutes here, probably around fifteen minutes or so, and again, I'll ask you to keep your remarks to less than two minutes and not to repeat things that have already been said. So this lady with her hand up, please, you approach the podium, give us your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Melissa Sandler, I live at twenty-eight Hyatt Drive. There's been a lot of exhaustive talk over the past few weeks, months about the balanced budget, which in my opinion gets us below sea level. Then you have talk of the level services budget, which in my opinion gets us at sea level. There hasn't been a lot of talk about what is the right number of the budget that gets us above sea level. We keep glazing over the unmet needs, one and a half million dollars on top of, I'm sure there's lengthy other needs that we're not addressing. So I'm asking you, I'm imploring you to put forth the right number to fully fund the Hingham Public Schools. It's the right thing to do for the students, the right thing to do for the teachers, it's the right thing to do for the future of this town. And I challenge anybody that questions the ability to do this override, become a substitute teacher for a day, walk a mile in our teacher's shoes, anyone in this room can do it, simply download the application online, it takes two seconds, they're in dire need of subs. And if you ever want to see what you're made of, we've had a lot of talk about kindergarten, walk into a kindergarten class of twenty-five and six-year-olds staring at you and pray that there is a parent educator to help you that day. Because when there is not, and trust me, I speak five and six-year-old, I have young kids, I don't have an education background, I was in sales, I've done it, okay? And before you can even get the rum, you talk about herding cats today, within the first four minutes of school, kid sticks his finger in the locker, drops his lunchbox, girl trips over the floor, someone dropped their water bottle, kid's like, I shouldn't have come to school today, I don't feel good, someone's sneezing, someone has to go to the bathroom, kid forgot his lunch, doesn't know what he wants for lunch, what happened to your kid, oh, he just took off, where'd he go, he went to the nurse, he wanted to turn his library book, this is before, yes, you get it, okay.
Thank you very much.
The point, excuse me, the point of my statement is, you are talking about presenting a balanced budget that gets rid of parent educators, that gets rid of these reading and writing specialists that help these teachers every single day. So before we talk about what the right thing to do is, I ask you to think about walking a mile in their shoes, go into these classrooms, do what they do for a day, and then you'll think really hard and long about cutting the budget for this school. So I'll ask you one more time, I implore you to put forth the budget number on the warrant that fully funds the school budget for our students and the future of this town. Thank you.
Good evening, Mary Power, One King Philip Path. I think the time has come for an override, but I don't know yet whether I support this override, because important details are still forthcoming. The increase that used to be required to maintain level services for the education budget used to be a little over three percent, it's now five percent. Facing similar tuition and utility rate increases, the level services increase for some of our peer communities is well below five percent. Wellesley's FY24 level services increase is two-point-eight-nine percent, Milton three-point-five, Duxbury three-point-three-five. Like Hingham, Needham's proposed budget increases five percent, but their budget proposal funds over fourteen new full-time equivalent positions. It's been said that Hingham doesn't have an expense problem, it has a revenue problem. I think it has both, and am concerned that so far in this process, we are only addressing the revenue issue. Successful overrides require both resetting the base and ensuring that future revenue and expense rates are in alignment. When an override resets the base, new revenue only grows at two-and-a-half percent a year. If the largest budget continues to grow by five percent, the town will quickly find itself needing an override simply to maintain services. If that happens, it will be harder to fund new services and new capital projects. There is discussion about a commitment as to the timing of the next override. For me, it will be difficult to support any override without one. I think taxpayers need time to absorb the tax increase from the debt exclusion in the fall and this override, which combined look to be about a twenty percent increase over the next three years, assuming a six-million-dollar override. In my experience, these tax increases will be challenging for many households to absorb, including households that do not qualify for tax relief programs. I also question whether median household income data captures the economic diversity that exists in our town today and that we have said is important to maintain. As we move forward towards town meeting, please keep in mind all our citizens and consider both revenue and expense growth. Thank you for your continued work on behalf of our community.
Liza, I meant we're going to go online for some folks, so, no, no, go ahead.
Nineteen Quarters Cove Road.
Liza, if I may just say, I appreciate the smack of books, but please, we're trying to get as many comments, so don't miss every one of them.
I'm not, no, I don't need to, there's a lot of repetition in those books. Liza O'Reilly, I served on the school committee for nine years, from May two thousand thirteen to twenty-twenty-two. This budget year is tough for all of you, but finally, the town has some choices. I support the override to maintain level services in the schools, and the balanced budget is very painful to look at. From FY ten to FY twenty-three, the school committee and the town proposed level services budgets necessary to meet student and citizens' needs, and revenues were restricted to new growth, reserve fund transfers, federal grants. The revenue was never enough, so school committee and town budgets were balanced by cutting costs. And these were, we never had level services. We were asked to propose level services budgets, but they were always cut. So I implore you, read the advisory committee report in each and every one of these warrants. Chronologically, you can find them online, and you'll see that this was never done. Katie Roberts spoke to the gains that the additional staff have provided. I'd like to point out that on January twenty-fourth this year, the Board of Education's meeting was addressing COVID learning deficits and achievement gaps and setting targets of how we want to close those gaps as a state. They referred to twenty-nineteen proficiency levels, but other board members said, why are we settling for that? We need to go beyond that. Hingham will be required to meet what these standards are. I am very worried that the reality of the balanced budget proposal will eliminate the additional staff we've heard tonight has been so helpful to our students, and Hingham will be in serious jeopardy of meeting the obligations of state and federal accountability targets. Do we really want to go there? So let's have a true, at least, level services budget for the first time in a long time. This also will meet the goals of our, and the vision of our master plan, of fulfilling the services that our community said that it wants and that we want it to have. So also, I thank the select board for actually supporting the opportunity to give us a chance to vote on an override this year. It's the first time since two thousand ten that we've had a chance, and I hope we can vote on a full override, not just half that was put forth at that time. I thank the school committee for all their work and for supporting the effort of an override, and I ask respectfully to the advisory committee to support it as well, so we can show the full cooperation and collaboration of our town at this vital time of supporting what we need for Hingham. So thank you very much.
I'm not seeing any hands raised online, so, sorry, so Ray Estes, would you unmute yourself, Ray, and?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, Ray Estes, United Street, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, sorry for not being in the room, I couldn't make it. Just briefly, I served also on the school committee very clearly with budgets over the years, and I really appreciate the comments that have been made by everybody so far this evening. It's kind of a very telling experience to go through this. I just wanted to express my personal opinion, I think it's vital that we adopt an override to right-size the school budget, but also to support town-wide needs for public safety, library, and other necessary services that, you know, Hingham residents deserve. I am also not sure what the correct number is, and I think that'll flesh itself out over the next few weeks. But it's important to remember that, and I think it's been said, this is not a new discussion, we've known for well over a decade, that at some point, we were going to need an operational override. Former town administrator, Ted Alexiades, used to talk about it frequently. There were many discussions during budget season about a structural deficit and spending beyond our means, and when the new growth started to slow, and you're out, it became clear that we were gonna have to find another revenue source. Unfortunately, that, in this case, means higher taxes for some. I do agree that, at the same time, while we examine revenue, we have to examine expenses. But I wanted to just make one other point. I think it's important to remember, in the context of this discussion, it's been mentioned tonight about fees and other sources of revenues, that this is public education, and that's been mentioned many times as well, and public education, in my opinion, and I think of the opinion of many in the room, should be paid for to the largest extent possible by all of the taxpayers. It shouldn't be carried by fees of a few users. Certainly, in our educational system in Hingham, there are necessary fees that are customary and reasonable and acceptable. But many parents, over the years, have been getting more and more exhausted, really, paying fees to help support programs that the budget simply can't. Increasing fees to privately fund more of the educational experience that we want to deliver to our kids is really not the answer. So I would ask for those of you who are looking for other ways to fund not only the school budget, but also the town budgets, to not just look at individual user fees, but also the entire tax base, particularly with respect to schools, as it should be public education supported by all taxpayers. I think someone mentioned Hingham Sports Partnership, I happen to be a board member of Hingham Sports Partnership, and we certainly do entertain grants from the schools and award grants on a regular basis. But HSP was founded in nineteen ninety-five. But HSP was founded in 1995, intended to be a supplement, and I heard that word used, for the booster programs for the sports, not to be a supplement for the school budget. And a lot of times, that's what we have become. And when we get a grant request, we examine it very closely. And one of the first questions we ask is, why isn't this being paid for in the context of the school budget? So I just want folks to, as they examine this, they examine the expense side, they examine the revenue side, and make a determination about what the appropriate number is going forward and how we can find a way to fund that. To think about this as public education and not try to target a few users and increase fees to support the public education that we want to deliver to our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. I'll take one final comment from the lady in the back.
Hi, I'm Brandi Marine, and I'm at 12 Pilgrim Road. And I was talking to my principal, who's Mary Eastwood, who's just wonderful. And in practice, so on, in line, right, when we get rid of a specialist at a school, right, at a elementary school, we're going to say that they can share specialists, which sounds like, you know, easy to share, right, that they can go back and forth. It's a small town. In practice, a specialist at an elementary school is not just a specialist. They don't only teach children library in the classroom. They're also there for pickup. They're also there at recess. They're also there after school for drop, like for drop-off. So, other way around, drop-off in the morning, pickup in the afternoon. Without, sharing in this case is not caring. Without each of the schools having their own specialists, you're taking drop-off and pickup away. You're taking safety resources for children away from elementary schools. And that's just one microcosm of what these cuts, how they will impact the school. Misty had such a wonderful point of go into the schools and see how. I have three minutes.
Two minutes. And you're pretty close to the end of the minutes. I'm going to be able to watch your time, but try not to repeat things that were even said. We do have a number of other items to cover this evening.
Great. I would encourage you to go into the school and see what the people that you're cutting do besides their job, because it's impactful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We have additional items on our agenda. More than welcome to say, or if you'd like to go. We understand that also.
I assume folks would like to go. So before we leave, I do want to just thank you very much for your time, for the public's time. I see lots of people on the call for the Select Board times, for the town hall administrators, administrators for being here and for your consideration of this budget. I understand, and we all here understand, that our goal or our role as school committee members is to advocate for our students and our schools. We also understand that all of us have a responsibility to all of the townspeople, which includes children and their families. So we appreciate the time and consideration that you're putting forth to consider our budget requests. They were well thought out. They were well-prepared. There was a lot of work put in there. I think a lot of really good decisions made and things we've not seen before with efficiencies and reallocations. And I hope you'll take that into consideration. I recognize that a 5% budget increase is not palpable for, or palpable for multiple years, but we really do believe that if we can get this level service done this year, that that will help, maybe not fully right-size, but it will lift up the budget dollars enough that we can try to commit without extraordinary expenses, like out-of-district tuitions or whatnot, that we really can do what we can to keep those budget at a more 3.5% to 4% raise range each year. So we appreciate your consideration. We do not take this lightly, the responsibility that not only we have, but you have as well. So we appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn the school committee.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. All of us in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Are you running the show, Tom?
I'll be.
Michelle, or both of you?
Yeah, I'll be presenting. Ready?
Yeah, ready.
I'll promise I'll be less than two hours.
Oh, thank you.
That's actually not even funny. I'll be less than, less than an hour, I promise.
Whatever it takes. We are here for you, sir.
We've got a lot to go over. The Select Board has had the benefit of a little bit of a preview of some of this, but I'm going to go over it because I need AdCom to hear all of it as well, as well as, of course, the community. So we'll start out by talking about, a little bit about context around this year's budget process. We'll go over the balanced budget, which will cover the reductions as the school department just did. We'll go through my recommended budget for FY24, and then we'll talk a little bit about what's to come and when. Okay. So starting off, just some budget context. I think it's important to understand that the, what we're looking at here is a significant deficit resulting, in fact, from critical capacity that was added during the pandemic, during the, to the schools and the town during the pandemic. So I just don't want to lose track of that. Most towns also across the state are realizing that 2.5% is simply not enough to cover services anymore. So that's also a reality. Of course, we need to find ways to maintain control over these expenses, but 2.5% is not cutting it. And then, of course, we have, we're trying to use, we used one-time and one-time federal and local reserve funds in '22 and '23. The last bullet is really one of the most important things I'll say tonight. And the idea is that, as we get through the pandemic, we're either going, and we're trying to fund the gap that was created in '22 and '23. We're ultimately going to either have to reduce services or increase recurring revenue. So that's really what we're talking about. The recurring revenue would, of course, come through an operational override. Just very briefly, I'll pop through these just to reset our collective memories. Back in, at ATM, at Annual Town Meeting in '21, your chair at the time, Bob Curly, is quoted as saying that, "For fiscal '23," at the time was the thought, "the town faces the prospect of an override to address what is essentially a structural deficit in the budget." And then, fast forward a few months, the Sustainable Budgeting Task Force had been formed and done its work. A number of items came out of that report, including, well, the last comment, I'll start with the bottom, is that, you know, we need to consider an operational override as we move forward to maintain and grow services. And their recommendation was in 2024. A number of items came out of that, came out, also out of that report. The town was experiencing increased budget pressure from regular expenditure growth for a long time prior to the pandemic. We're also, they also recommend, the committee also recommended that we, that we seek to, to both tax, should seek both tax and non-tax revenue to provide the services that we need. You know, as has been mentioned several times tonight, I think we need to target the 3.5% growth rates. That's going to be key as we get into our MOU that was mentioned by Kerry and Michelle a little earlier. 3.5% is what was recommended by the Sustainable Budgeting Task Force, who I'll remind everyone, was formed in a very collaborative, purposefully, in a very collaborative manner. Liz Klein from the Select Board chaired it. Michelle from my office helped to staff it. We had Representative Donna Smallwood, former Chair of AdCom, on there. And we also had the sitting superintendent at the time, plus the sitting, thank you, business manager was there throughout the entire process as well as a member of the school committee. So there was a very collaborative, open process, free exchange of ideas. And again, these are the recommendations that came out of that. So we will be seeking to consider closing the FY23 budget. The budget that we're in right now, using one-time funds, which is why we're recommending an override in '24. And then, of course, in the '22 warrant, we had a quote to that we will need to reconcile revenues with expenses through an override. So again, this is not a surprise. This is something that's been coming, and I think the town is prepared for and has been educated on. So moving into our balanced budget, the, right now, I just want to remind everyone, I've said this a couple of times in joint sessions and elsewhere, that the town is required to provide a balanced budget. That is what we're going to do. The current deficit going in right now is $6.2 million. The municipal portion of that is 2.2, just under 2.2 million. We heard the schools 4-plus earlier. So this is the other side of that deficit coin. One of the approaches that me and my team took as we identified the cuts that we would apply in the event an override was not passed was that we wanted to make sure, A, we maintained our contractual obligations and any legal requirements, of course. We also wanted to make sure that we focused our remaining funds on the core municipal services that municipalities are expected and required to provide. We took off the top some of the, or all of the requests that had been added back in FY22. We tried to spread the impact of these cuts across the entirety of the organization. And as we're doing, as I did with the Select Board a couple of weeks ago and as I'm doing here now, we will demonstrate the community. We'll demonstrate to the community the impact of these cuts. And of course, if an override does fail, these restrictions or reductions would in fact go into place on July 1st. All right. So this is just a general, I'm going to go into each of these in a little bit more detail, but general government, public safety, public works and recreation, culture and recreation will be cut about a half a million dollars each with human services at about $150,000. We're looking at 22-plus total FTE losses in the event that these reductions need to be employed. All right. Through the government, the general government sector, you know, there's, first I'll start with Hingham, and I should have started with, every one of these reductions that we're going to talk about is, you know, we're not, I think, you said this once, Michelle, that, how did you phrase it? Yeah, the town is not fluffy. We don't have a fluffy budget. We're always running lean and mean, and we have the budget we need to provide the services that the town needs to receive. And when you start reducing these budgets, it gets deep very quickly and starts to impact people in real, serious ways very quickly. So you're going to see a lot of that in here as you did with the school department. So we would start, we would be reducing the Conservation Commission's, support for the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, the Affordable Housing Trust, as well as all of the applicants and projects that come before those boards. We would be slowing economic development efforts. Ironically, that's something that we would have to do, which is the thing that would likely get us out of this hole. So, but that's nonetheless a reality. We would be reducing support for the Select Board, myself, and the other boards and committees as we, which would result in decreased capacity and efficiencies across the town. We would be reducing the support for department heads in all aspects of local government. We would be closing GAR Hall as well as 308 Cushing, which would directly affect the rowing team, who is a lesser over there. We would be decreasing the municipal, our maintenance of municipal facilities. We would be cutting the GIS capacity down, which is used across the organization for strategic decision-making. And we would be reducing our ability to effectively communicate by canceling our communications contract. Public safety, this is one that scares a lot of people. Like, that other one is uncomfortable. This one could be deemed as scary in ways. We would be reducing police support to the schools. That would affect safety and security, for sure. It would be less of a police presence at drop-off and pickup, which would affect traffic safety, community and youth relations programs. The DARE program would be cut, and classroom curriculum attendance participation would also be decreased. We would diminish the ability to support the community members with mental health crises. We would reduce our animal control response capabilities. The police administration would be, would be, support for the police administration would be cut, which would slow our accreditation process. And we would be decreasing the fire department's minimum manning from currently at 11 to 9. So that's a direct impact. That would remove either an engine or an ambulance from our active staff, our active response tools, which would increase response times and, of course, exacerbate stress levels for the remaining staff, which I'll illustrate in a little while. Also, we would be cutting out things like CPR programs and the like. Public works. We would be reducing trash and recycling pickup, the mowing of fields, maintenance of public grounds and parks, tree planting, special community events, et cetera. We would be delaying things like pothole repair. We would be delaying line painting. We would close the swap shop and other programs at the transfer station would be affected, like the yard, like the yard waste area and trash compacters and trailers. The human services sector would see decreases in public health services as a general rule. We would be eliminating the social worker position, which is, which is something that I think is really, really needed right now. Uh, the town has been going through a difficult time recently, and I think that that social worker position um makes a difference in people's lives, but we would not be able to afford having it. Uh, we would also reduce the senior center transportation program significantly. And uh that will directly affect seniors' abilities uh to attend appointments, events, programs, and the like. In our culture and recreation sector, we'd be um cutting that section by sector by about a half a million dollars as well. This would eliminate the very popular um town, uh town-wide field maintenance program that was implemented two years ago and has made a big difference. Uh, you see that photo in the bottom, that's that's the result of that program. That would turn back to what it once was. Um, we would be closing the public library on Sundays. Uh, we would be reducing trillions and other programs at the library, and we would be diminishing um the ceremonies, marking holidays, and special events. Okay, so, and anticipating that not happening, I'm gonna put forward the recommend, the budget that I do recommend. Okay. I'm calling this our level services and additional request budget, just for ease of understanding. So, the, my recommendation, it does, in fact, contain level services from FY twenty-three on, which said another way, all those reductions would not would not occur. Okay, the reductions I just mentioned. We would also um level services budget as presented by the municipal departments over the last um few months. You you've seen department heads coming before you since December through January. Those would be um, those would be presented. Uh, and those are in my budget, with the exception of any additional requests. So, of the additional requests that were presented by the department heads, I am recommending six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars worth of the one point one million dollars that we had uh seen in the presentations that we're all making to you. And I'll go through those in a moment. Okay, so this is just a summary page. I'm gonna go through each of these, uh, each of these additional requests, so you can understand uh better. But um, you'll, and I'll note that the firefighter request has been called out, uh, special. I'll, again, I'll explain that. I have Chief Murphy online if we need further explanation, but I think I'm gonna do my best to do it justice. So, uh, we'll go through each of these uh page by page. So, starting with the assistant engineer, uh, of, many of you were still were on the board. Um, maybe not many of you, a few of you uh left still on the, on the advisory committee. That's right, that's right. When we uh, when we remade and reimagined the engineering department several years ago. Um, what we said at the time was, we wanted to redistribute the tasks that that department had traditionally been been providing. And we've done a lot of that, and it's been a couple of years since that occurred. And I also said at the time that we would be reevaluating the the department and its staffing as things, as as we get a better sense of what they actually need versus what we thought they needed. Uh, that's occurred, that's happened. Uh, the reality is our our approach of one engineer with no uh backup engineering staff is just not working, despite the reallocation of some of the tasks. You can see here all the things that are that are happening, or many of the things that are happening. Um, it's just, it's, yeah, I don't want to say that that things are getting missed or dropped because they're not, but working our engineer to the level that we are right now is simply not sustainable. So, we need that assistant engineer. It's a, it's a critical position. Well, the senior center is also asking for a program coordinator. Uh, this is a, this has been a a topic of conversation I've had with the senior center for several years. Um, this has now made my uh my list of additional requests this year. Um, the idea here is, there's over forty hours that the current staff is employed, is employing in programming res- uh programming level responsibility, and that's in in addition to their regular, to their regular work. Um, and that includes the director. And when the director isn't doing things like uh, like strategic planning and seeking federal grants or state grants, that's problematic when they're busy setting up tables for programs. So, we need to, we need to get the right staff doing the right jobs, and that's why I'm recommending this. Um, I will note that of our sixteen peer communities that have senior centers, uh, twelve of them are reported employing at least one full-time uh program coordinator. And this request comes in at sixty-five thousand dollars. Sustainability coordinator. Uh, everything all becomes new again, right? We did this last year. We had gone back and forth as to whether we wanted it to be a salaried position or if we wanted to try to do it as a contract position and see what the need was, and that's kind of where we landed. So, we left it in the expenses lines. Um, we funded it. And then, lo and behold, the state, uh, Joe Moschino and Pat O'Connor were able to come through for us and get an earmark in the state budget to actually pay for this position as a contracted position in year one. So, that's been great. That's underway. The the our uh contract employee is actively engaged in doing wonderful things, working closely with art. Um, the the main task that this, that this position is really gonna have to be, is gonna have to undertake is the implementation of the climate action plan. Um, that is a, is a significant um effort. Uh, you know, it's, we we set a goal as a town of achieving uh net-zero carbon emissions by twenty forty. And and it's one I think that I don't, I've heard from this current board is a priority, and and I think we heard from the town town meeting a couple of years ago loud and clear that that was a priority for the entire community. So, that said, I'm asking for forty-nine thousand dollars as a partial funding, because the contract that's funded through the state earmark will actually run through November. So, I only need this FY twenty-four for this position to be partially funded. It would have to then be fully funded in twenty-five and going forward. But for FY twenty uh four, we'll only need a part, some partial funding to the sum of about forty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, just to drill home that point of the sustainability coordinator and the and the action plan. So, we only, it's a draft plan, granted, by the way, it's on the website, feel free to peruse it. Um, again, goal of net-zero carbon emissions by twenty forty. There are six action categories, a hundred and twenty-nine action steps, fifty-eight of which with town roles. Um, someone will need to coordinate, uh, track, educate, um, determine compliance and qualifications, et cetera, seek funding for implementing all those tasks. And that's what we're anticipating the sustainability coordinator doing. Okay, we're also asking that the administrative assistant at the, in the uh veteran services office uh be moved from a twenty-hour-per-week position up to a full-time position, so up to thirty-five. Uh, that job is currently being done by the world's greatest volunteer, John Asher, and has been for several months, um, as he's filling in for for our uh, in our vacancy. We, this has been a really hard position to fill. We've filled it twice. We've done several actual um job uh seeking efforts. And uh, you know, it's a, it's a tou- tough position to fill. So, um, we need, I I firmly believe that there's enough work for that to be a full-time position. And if we make it a full-time position, I do believe we'll get better uh qualified candidates that will more fill the need that Penguin has. So, I'm recommending that that position also be moved to a full thirty-five hours, and that's an additional request of just under twenty-one. Okay, this one. Um, hopefully, everyone sees the need on this committee for this. Uh, this is, it seems really obvious to us. Um, we hadn't brought this before um for a number of reasons. But the reality is, a number of most communities now are using more modern um budgeting tools than our Excel tables. Um, so I think we need to move out of that world into a modern budgeting uh software and uh and hope that that will help us streamline the budget development process, as well as increase efficiency and really transparency. Um, many of the, the, many of the things that we do now with Excel are all fully capable. We've had uh a couple of demonstrations so far. We got more later, uh, I think tomorrow. Um, and we'll continue to get quotes on this. Uh, just so you know, the, that additional request is a smidgen high. Well, it's likely to come down a little, but uh for now, it's fifty thousand dollars. And the tools, I, it it's important to note, will do not just budget development, but also salary and expenditure projections, financial forecasts, and capital planning reporting, to the point that when we're in negotiations with the union, we can type in the s- the the terms of the negotiations and get an actual printout of the effects of those terms on the budget. So, I think when the, when the president, when the uh, when the um, when the person that was giving us the demonstration on the software yesterday, I stopped him and wished him, wished him uh happy Valentine's Day, because uh I told him I loved him, I think. It's really exciting to be able to see the functionality built into this this software. So, um, hopefully, that's something that everyone can wrap their head around. Okay, so one for, that's a little bit more difficult uh to grasp, um, but we'll, I'll do my best here. So, we're asking for four firefighters this year. I I start off by saying, this is a longstanding request, something we've actually been seeking, or the chief has been seeking for a number of years. I'm not always able to bring it forward, because it's a four-hundred-thousand-dollar ask. For those of you that have been on AdCom, there's never four-hundred-thousand dollars additional in any budget cycle to be able to fund four new firefighters. So, um, the reality is, I'm bringing this forward this year because this is an override here, okay? Uh, the idea is to move the maximum manning from thirteen to fourteen. I have a graphic in a minute that will help explain all this. But we're gonna move the maximum manning from thirteen to fourteen, uh, and hopefully, that will decrease the need to um to bring firefighters in on overtime and and holdovers uh in order to preserve the minimum staffing of eleven. And again, I have a graphic that will show that. This, this fourth bullet point is really shocking. I think that, I'm not sure everyone can can would fully normally understand this, that there is one shift filled um with overtime every day in the past year. Fifty-eight percent of those were filled at double turn, because pe- people don't, didn't volunteer for their for their overtime shift. So, the chief had to force um firefighters to uh to stay on an additional shift. And I know you all heard that when he came in and presented to you. Um, we have been doing a number uh with John Asher and with, with uh Chief Murphy and others. We've done a number of um of mo- a number of modeling efforts that are showing that we'll be able to uh likely offset the total cost of the town. Note, I didn't say budget, and I'll explain that in a minute. But the total cost of the town uh of the the three-hundred-ninety-two-thousand-dollar cost of these firefighters will be offset out of overtime costs in the town. Now, the reason I didn't say budget is because you'll note uh that the town, can you jump ahead two, two slides just for a second? So, you'll note that the town is regularly un- significantly under-budgeting the fire overtime. I know, I don't have to tell advisory committee this, but for anyone that's listening online, uh, please know that that is, that is a reality. And the way that's funded is through the reserve fund and subs- the reserve fund pro- either the reserve fund or the reserve fund process through e- through additional funds at town meeting, usually with Article eleven. So, um, we need to fix this. This is a structural problem, and we need to fix it. So, that three-hundred-ninety-two-thousand dollars that we're gonna spend in the budget for four new firefighters will lower the total cost to the town of overtime, but not necessarily out of the budget, which is obviously where it would be easiest to to us show the offset, right? But uh not necessarily out of the budget. So, I just wanted to to point that out. Uh, but we will be able to offca- offset the cost to the town of that amount of money. Alright, so going back one slide. So, this helps us all to understand the 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 problem and how and how we're trying to solve it. So, I wish the school department was here. I tried to do a little algebra. It's probably not algebra, but whatever. Alright, so, right now, we have thirteen. That's our current uh maximum staffing with our minimum staffing at eleven firefighters. So, just so everyone understands, that's a, we cannot have fewer than eleven firefighters working in town across all three stations at any one time. And where, we have maximum staffing of thirteen, so our budget only allows for up to thirteen uh firefighters working. So, what we're trying to do is bump that number to fourteen, so that we have a delta of three firefighters. That means that, excuse me, the um firefighters that are out on sick leave or vacations, personal leave, uh, on-the-job injury or O J I, et cetera, will be able, that will be able to be out of the office without, without requiring that the department backfill them with overtime shifts. Alright, just in case that wasn't clear, I I I thought this graphic might might help um, might help explain it. One, one note, I'm just gonna pause here for a second. I think one note that's important for the town to understand, and I know all of you already do, because you've talked to the chief, but in case anyone is gonna watch this or hears this from the town, I think it's really important for everybody to understand this. The people that we're talking about uh being out on long-term injury or um or on-the-job injuries are the people that are responding to these horrible, horrific incidents that we all read about on social media. They're the people that roll up on the Apple Store, where, I won't get graphic, but there are significant, serious injuries that are in, that are debilitating to witness and certainly to care for the people there. So, when, back in the day, right, in the eighties and nineties and maybe even the aughts, right, everyone, you you were told, right? We all, we seen this, suck it up, get back to work, stop complaining. Nowadays, we we know that there are long-term effects to that kind of behavior. So, we are now, as a society, I think, um, offering diagnoses of things like post-traumatic stress disorder and that there are clinical approaches to solving or to helping people with those problems um in medical ways. That requires time off. That was not normally done ten, twenty, thirty, forty years ago. Uh, so, we're seeing that. We're seeing these uh new firefighters taking care of themselves, I think, in a better way. I think the town would accept, would would appreciate that. But I wanted to drill home why we're seeing these spikes in in overtime needs. And I think that it's um, a lot of people will will call it generational, but that feels, that feels derogatory to the current generation. I think it's more societal as we've evolved. So, anyway, I just wanted to point that out there. Jumping ahead two slides. Uh, and again, these two slides, I think you've all seen these before. Um, back in nineteen eighty, we had sixty-seven firefighters on staff. Then Prop two and a half happened. We dropped down to fifty-two. We slowly inched our ways, our way back, uh, but we're still uh ten firefighters fewer than we were forty years ago on staff. And call volume only increases as population does. So, uh, that, that number is not gonna, is not gonna slow. That, these calls are still gonna happen, whether we have, you know, eleven firefighters, twelve, thirteen, or fourteen. So, um, that's something to bear in mind. So, those are the the firefighters. And again, at the end, when we ask for, go go for questions, Chief Murphy is on the phone if somebody needs a little more explanation of um the firefighter uh request. Okay, the other item that, so this is a, we we we've categorized this as a shared benefit. This is boosting the town's capital budget. Um, we do a little bit of that each year. We add about a hundred thousand dollars to it each year. I'm looking to goose it by a full five hundred thousand uh in, as a part of the override. The capital outlay plan is supposed to be budgeted to to the two hundred, three to six percent per the uh AdCom's financial policy. And currently, we're at two point seven. So, we're out of sync with the, with our own financial policy. So, adding five hundred thousand dollars would bring us back within. Um, I wanna guess it's in the ballpark of three-two or so, three point two percent or so is where that would move it to. So, it's not significantly up, but it's certainly within, within the ball, within the the range and not um, and not too, not too low.
I know it's been a little bit of a hot potato, but just because it ties in with this particular topic. Have we landed on whether what's happening with capital outlay as relates to the school technology budget?
Do you know?
I think that's part of their additional request at this point. I'm not sure.
So, that, we haven't moved, or they have, they haven't.
They haven't moved to, it's a capital request this year.
It's still a capital request. Okay, thank you.
Sure. So, the last thing I wanna do, and I, and I, and I, I don't have many slides left, so I'll, I I will take a minute to read this blue box, because I think it's important for everyone to hear. Um, the capital assets of the town comprise the town's physical infrastructure inherited from previous generations and intended to be passed on to future generations. It is the aggregate uh property, plant, and equipment used by the town. We are the current ti- caretakers. It is our collective responsibility to maintain, replace, when necessary, upgrade, and or expand as directed by town meeting the town's capital assets. That's directly out of our own financial policy. So, um, you know, we we do this to some extent, but I don't think we do it enough. I've for years referred to our capital budget as a structural deficit. I still believe that um this solves some of that problem. I put this one in just 'cause if I can't sleep at night, neither should you. This is the page that keeps me up at night. The uh, you know, the number of deferrals that Randy Sylvester has to, has to live through on a regular basis. You know, if he can't do that work, all this gorgeous town of ours doesn't, is a little bit less gorgeous, if you know what I'm saying. These trucks are held together and sometimes with tape and glue. And uh, and that's not, that's certainly not, I think, the town that that we are. So, anyway, throw that out there. Uh, just as a uh, as a comparison, I think it's helpful to understand the the types of requests that we get from our department heads for capital uh for capital expenditures and the degree to which we're able to to fund those. I I'll note that the hash box uh on the FY twenty-four proposed budget is the the amount that would be funded with the override. But that, that's the five hundred thousand dollars. Okay, just a quick summary page. We just heard from the school department. Uh, their additional requests are totaling just over fu- one point five million. The municipal total request, including the firefighter, uh, despite the offset, is about six hundred and seventy-three thousand. The total shared amount through the capital uh increase is five hundred thousand, uh, for a grand total of about two point seven million dollars. Next steps. So, we're continuing our on, our our outreach campaign. I know we have uh some of our, a couple of our um select board members are doing uh office hours. We've got uh, we've added um some functionality, as well as information to the website. Um, that will continue. This presentation will be on there first thing in the morning. So, uh, so that work is continuing. We have a full outreach plan that we're refining each day. We are anticipating um uh public information sessions, uh, probably two of them, uh, dates to be determined still, um, et cetera. So, there's a lot of information still to come. Um, we'll be doing a video series similar to what we did in the fall uh to help answer uh regular uh common questions that we're hearing, et cetera. The, you know, the next few items are things that we can expect to have finalized and summarized uh here in early March. We'll be um finalizing the balance budget reductions. We have a couple of items left. As all, as we always do at the beginning of March, we'll get the true numbers from the health insurance costs. We'll get a final number, well, not a final number, but at least a guide number from the governor when she puts her budget out here at the beginning of March. Again, this, the the legislature doesn't actually pass a budget until, uh, God help us, the end of June, as helpful as that is. Um, but anyway, we at least get a guide, a guide from um, from the governor's budget here in a few weeks. Um, we have the, we'll have the final override proposal in a couple of weeks. We'll then be able to put out a tax impact calculator for the public to understand how the, how the proposed override will affect their taxes. Uh, we're gonna put together a financial management plan, i.e. the M O U that we've been talking about for a few months. Um, we've begun conversations with the school committee uh with that. We'll continue them. Um, Chair Ramsey has been helping us uh with that effort. We will be, um, we have to send the warrant to the printer on March twenty-fourth, so that it's all in all of your inma- all of your mailboxes a couple of weeks ahead of town meeting. Then, of course, um, town meeting is on April twenty-fourth and the election the following Saturday. Just a quick note to remind everyone that in order for an override to be approved, it has to pass uh majority votes at both town meeting and at ballot, at the ballot question. Um, and then, just a note that this is our active website, again, being updated regularly um with new information, new functionality, et cetera. And that's all I have.
Can I add one additional, just, just uh, just one of the points to talk about with additional firefighters?
Just, uh, just one of the points to talk about with additional firefighters. And, um, when we had that major fire last summer on Mann Street, we only had eleven firefighters working that, that day. We had to call in assistance from multiple departments. Um, obviously devastating for the two homeowners that lost their houses that day. If those winds had been differently, that entire neighborhood would have gone up in fire. And to only have eleven firefighters on duty, the bare minimum that we have is a significant public safety risk. Additionally, to say to a firefighter who's just come off a twenty-four-hour shift, you can't go home right now because we don't have someone to backfill you unexpectedly and we're not gonna get someone in here for another twelve or twenty-four hours. It crushes morale. It also presents a public safety risk that you have fatigued employees, you know, providing a tremendous public service to the town. You know, we're not, we're not talking about police officers, but, you know, we have a similar problem with our police department where, you know, someone comes off the midnight shift, working midnight to eight, and they're forced now to work the day shift. And that, that is a major problem because you have a major fatigue issue there as well. But, um, I just wanna give some context out of the fire department because I've, I'm the liaison of the fire department. I've heard that from a lot of firefighters that they're concerned about morale issues and public safety issues with the, with the low numbers we currently have.
So our agenda for Tuesday, which has already been drafted, includes a review of all of this information that we've already just seen. So there were some last-minute changes where Tom said, yeah, I can present all of this information to us tonight. Select Board will be here, perhaps the school committee, so everybody will hear the same information. But they are coming back to us on Tuesday. Um, it is getting a little bit late. We have some more items to go. But I, you, you know, I don't wanna call the enthusiasm. So if we have a few questions, um, we can certainly get them now. The information is, is fresh on everybody's mind. But we will have them coming back on Tuesday. And we can take a deeper dive then, um, it'll be the main item on our agenda. So, um, so I would just ask you a couple of questions, yes, but, uh, but, you know, hold some for Tuesday. So Liz, uh, Liz, you had a question?
Um, yeah, so it actually follows from, uh, Mr. Ramsey's question as well. I noticed under the public safety, one of the budget cuts is from eleven firefighters to nine. And then one, one problem we have right now obviously is even sort of maintaining that eleven, and that's a problem. How is that even like a conceivable cut for us to propose, given what we're seeing then in the later slides about the fire department?
I hear you. I absolutely hear you. The cuts that we all have, that I have, you can see how draconian they are. You heard from the school department how draconian what they have to do is. These are big numbers. We're not cutting a hundred thousand dollars. I gotta cut a couple of million. Um, and like I said at the beginning, these, we're not fluffing. These cuts get deep very quickly. Um, we would have to take an engine out of service that is not sustainable for a town this size. Uh, but it's what we'd have to do. We wouldn't, to answer your question, we would rely, our, our response times would go up and we would rely probably pretty heavily on, um, on mutual aid from our neighboring towns.
I do, um, would Addams firefighters, would it significantly impact income that firefighters are making from overtime now? And would they still have the opportunity to work overtime if they were so motivated to work overtime in order to increase their income?
Yeah, so, so yes, I'd say fortunately and unfortunately, depending on, on your position. However, um, we were showing in here, can you go back to that slide? We were showing in here that I think last year was a one-point-seven million dollar overtime budget. Uh, this year, we're trending to about one-seven-five, maybe one-eight. Um, and we're up, and, um, uh, we budgeted about eight-hundred thousand. So the three-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars and the new four fighters, it's not gonna offset a million dollars in overtime. There'll be plenty of overtime opportunities for them. Frankly, I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that the, that the double-time forces go away. That's kind of what I'm hoping happens. Um, there will still be, unfortunately, there, I think we, we've seen enough trends to know that there's going to be OJIs, there's gonna be on-the-job injuries that are gonna have to require people to be out and to get well. Um, and that's where the big expenses really come in. But, um, this, this gets us a little bit more room to be able to, to, um, deal with those expenses.
I, I also think that, I know the police department, when they, before they force, they ask for volunteers. So individuals who would like to work the overtime or think they have somebody to do it. And then if they get no volunteers, they force based on seniority. So the, the junior firefighter, the junior officer, I believe, gets forced to do the shift.
I know one of the big challenges of figuring out the override is of what to set it at and how many years out that increased amount of money would help cover what we would expect the normal increases to be. What is your current thinking? Um, what, uh, what are you predicting about this?
Um, it's the question. It's, I know it's what we've been working towards, all of these. You know, I think of them all as data points. Everything we're doing is yet another data point to help us craft that projection. The, the MOU, if you will. What goes into it? What types of, what language? You know, the, we have a lot of, uh, guidance from the Sustainable Budgeting Task Force to see if three-five can get us to X number of years. Um, we think it can with, uh, but the, the problem, Brenda, is I don't yet have a size of the override. So our early projections, that I don't wanna publicize yet, are showing that we would be able to get to a reasonable number of years with a reasonable growth rate assumption at an anticipated override size. But that's very vague answer. Um, I'm gonna have a lot more information for you in probably two to three weeks that I'd feel more comfortable publicizing.
Um, I just wanted to go back. One question, though, on the, um, the budget for the firefighters would actually, I mean, we obviously need to put it in the FY twenty-four budget, but the expenses actually won't hit us until the following year because of hiring and training, correct?
Great point. Thank you, Nancy. Um, it's, it's hard, right? So I, I would love to be able to say that we're gonna put these firefighters in and then we're gonna, that money will immediately be seen the next year, except that it takes a year between posting a, a job and having a firefighter in a truck because of the amount of time you gotta go through with civil service to hire them and then they're in, uh, academy for six months. So, um, it's an effort. So we gotta, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to fund it, hopefully in twenty-four. Uh, frankly, we would use a portion of that year's, um, anticipated salary for those four firefighters to help offset that year's overtime budget.
Right.
But it needs to be there in twenty-four, so that we know to hire the firefighters.
Yeah.
And then in twenty-five is when we're really gonna see that, we anticipate seeing that benefit.
So like going back to Ayesha's comment, like, don't replay that last year.
Just, I just wanted to make a comment, namely for my AdCom colleagues, uh, about the capital outlay budget, which, um, is a serious issue every year, and we just finalized that budget, uh, last night. Um, so what I wanted to say, though, because you wouldn't know this if you're not on capital outlay, um, the chair, Eric Valentine, has done just an incredible job of getting departments to understand, talk about no fluff. It's not just that there's no fluff. It's they come in knowing, these are things I really need, but I've prioritized them this way 'cause I know you can't give me everything, which of course is true. Um, and so it is a very lean budget to begin with. And although it may sound like five-hundred thousand dollars added, isn't that big a deal? Uh, we actually put in what we would use that override money for. And, you know, it's, it is a ma, it is a big deal. And particularly when it comes to things like certain things for the schools and for DPW, which everything is expensive. I mean, it's just, you know, that's just how it is. So I just wanna, I, thank you for that addition and let people know. It's, it is, it's not a fluff budget.
Okay, I think, uh, we'll probably take a deeper dive next week.
Be there.
Thank you for the slides. We can certainly go through those and digest them and formulate some questions and that sort of thing. Um, I note that I have a hand-raised Diane De Napoli.
Sure.
Uh, we'll, uh, we'll take a question from, from Diane, so. Diane, if you could unmute yourself and, um, give us your name and your address. You're still muted. Okay. Diane? She went back to muted, so. Diane, you're unmuted. Can you hear us? Okay, um, we'll just go on then. Okay, so. Uh, we do have some additional agenda items. We're gonna, uh, go back to some warrant articles that we heard before. They're welcome to stay. You can rest with us or if you'd like to, uh, return them, it's, uh, neutral. We're not offended.
Polls in favor. Joe?
Hi.
Liz?
Hi.
I'm gonna as well. Have a great weekend, buddy.
Thank you.
AdCom members, we have a couple of warrant articles that we have heard before. We have, uh, recirculated updated comments and, uh, so I will ask Joe to, um, Joe, you've got two. You circulated your updates and, um, if you wanna take it away, uh, if there are no additional comments, we can go right to a vote, but we'll see what happens.
Yeah, the, um, for Article R, which is to, um, amend the, the language of Article eighteen, even the bylaws. Uh, what you've got to do, the fees for plumbing and gas, uh, key points on the article are in work. Um, one, to increase the fees. There was a, um, a study done by the, um, building department, which we can go into details if you'd like. Um, and also to change the protocol so that the fees going forward could be updated from time to time as necessary by the Select Board. All right? And also that the fees that are collected through, uh, the plumbing and gas permits plus fees in a, um, a complimentary Article, Article Z, uh, used to fund a revolving fund uh, that pays for the inspectors who do the actual work of inspecting, uh, in the town here, work that is done installing plumbing, gas, and electrical apparatus. Um, so that is, um, the, the background. Um, you know, with regard to, um, the work that the building department did for the plumbing and plumbing and gas, um, fees were last adjusted in two, two thousand and twelve. That's a slight change from what we looked at last week. Last week, it, um, said that the gas had not been, um, or plumbing had not been reviewed since twenty-ten. Um, closer look at some details proved that to be incorrect, so we've corrected that. Um, and, you know, recognizing, um, the need to keep the revolving fund solvent, uh, the building department looked at over one-thousand-and-seven, uh, different permit applications and the revenue that was gained from them. And then from that developed the new fees. Uh, there's about thirty of them, which, uh, we can read or we can look at your, um, your, your leisure. And so, uh, those, the fees from those expenditures will continue to, um, fund, uh, the, uh, revolving fund. Um, expenditures, uh, critical part of controlling how much is taken out of that revolving fund will continue to be done, uh, through another article, Article I, which sets a limit on the amount that can be drawn out from that revolving fund on an annual basis. So, um, with that is kind of the background, the reasons for why this was looked at. Um, I would like to recommend that we, um, amend Article eighteen with the language set forth, uh, in these, um, Article R.
Now, we have a segment, sorry. Thank you. Um, are there any questions or comments about the comment or the recommended motion? Actually, out of your hands somewhere else.
It is. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I think the question, um, maybe there's no way around it. But there's, there's no exemption or anything for town projects, are there? No, that's, if the question, if there is, okay, yeah. Well, there is. Okay, good. I'm glad. Which, um, you know, as an aside, adds a significant, we'll be adding a significant amount of work to that department over the next several years. I knew that came up and I just, it, it wasn't clear to me if there was an exception. So, you know, the answer would be, yes, it would be better than having to borrow it as part of the cost to build a school.
True. Uh, additional questions or comments or recommended motion? Andy? No, okay, then, um, we have a motion and a second, so we come to vote. Uh, it is a roll call vote. Nancy?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
David Lane?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Caitlin?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Do you get my vote?
Joe?
Aye.
Lindsey?
Aye.
Jason? And Carol?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Uh, Joe, you wanna keep, uh, you're on a roll here?
Yes, let's keep going. We're almost to the end of the alphabet. So, Article, Article Z, uh, which will be to amend the general bylaws of Article twenty-nine with regard to electrical permit fees. Um, and will the town vote to amend the general bylaws of the Town of Hingham adopted March thirteenth, nineteen thirty-nine?
I'm not saying anything, Andy.
How's that, Andy?
That's fine.
Nobody's ever accused me of having a very soft voice. So, so start again. The, the Article Z is to amend, amend the general bylaws of Article twenty-nine with regard to electrical permit fees. Um, by, and by deleting Article twenty-nine of the general bylaws in its entirety and replacing them with said Article twenty-nine from, with the language from Article Z. Um, included in that will be, uh, a list of new electric permit fees. Again, there's approximately thirty-some-odd fees on that list, um, which certainly we're welcome to look at. Uh, the reasons for doing this are very similar to plumbing and gas in that, uh, one, we have to continue to keep the revolving fund for the building department solvent. And in an analysis that was done by the building department of nine-hundred-and-seventy-five different permit fees over the past twelve months, um, showed that the total revenue from those needed to be increased and that those increases will come to us through the, um, in, uh, implementation of these new fees. Like the Article R that we just talked about, another, uh, change here to be cognizant of is that moving forward, the adoption of changes to these, both the plumbing, gas, and electrical fees can be done by the Board of Selectmen, uh, as necessary and when necessary. Um, and just as a historical note, the last time these fees were looked at was in twenty-ten, so they're certainly warranted being looked at now. And one other, um, kind of side note, or I think a piece of information that's worth knowing, for both, uh, the, uh, for all the plumbing, gas, and electrical fees, with these new rates that are being implemented, we kind of come into about the median level of fees in the ten, in ten surrounding communities. So we're not, um, way out on our own with these fees at all. So with that, if there's any other questions with regard to this article?
Questions about the comment, edits to the comment?
Well, then.
Not, we'll take a motion.
Then I recommend that the town amend Article twenty-nine of the Town of Hingham general bylaws by depleting. Then I recommend that the town amend Article 29 of the town of Hingham general bylaws by depleting the existing Article 29. Of the existing bylaws in its entirety and replacing with said article with these new fees listed among, along with some other. Points such as the ability for the selectmen to change these moving forward.
Okay, any additional comments? If not, we will come to vote. It's a roll call vote again. Nancy?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
Daveline?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Caitlin?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. And Kathy, we are now on to Article V.
So Article V is the article brought forward by the Harbor Development Committee that we discussed last week. Article V requests funds for the permitting of inner harbor coastal structures. As Bill Bearden and some of the other members of the Harbor Development Committee discussed last week. Basically, they need these funds to complete the permitting process. Due to the fact that the state changed regulations in unanticipated ways. That's number one. And second, inflationary costs have gone up since the money was first approved in 2015. And then a later approval in 2017. So. The article basically asks the town to raise an appropriate sum of money not to exceed $360,000. To complete the permitting and design process of the inner harbor coastal structures. Building on money that has already been spent. This is complete that process.
Just a quick clarified question for you. So, 360, we're just raising the cap, so it's not an additional 360 on top of what's already been spent?
It is an additional 360.
So they've spent the 2175 or 240?
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
Permitting is. It has been settled that the proposal is that it comes from reserve funds, transfer, right, rather than any other source of funding, right? I do not know the answer to that question. I mean, we kept the language at the beginning broad. And we said appropriate, borrow, transfer. And our recommendation seemed to be that the town appropriate or transfer from available funds these monies. I haven't got any guarantee or commitment that that's what the town wants to do.
The alternative would be to borrow, and I would be very surprised if we would elect to borrow.
Such a small amount.
For such a small amount of money. In all likelihood, it would be. From my ready dates.
This is the thing John Poplin checks to be. Right.
So you should just change that last sentence though, that this article asks the town. Well, I guess it does ask it in the article, but we're not recommending borrowing.
We're recommending appropriate or transfer.
Any additional comments, questions?
I have a question on, in the recommendation. It talks about the line, the sum of money not to exceed 360,000 to be expended by the select board. For use of permitting and design in harbor coastal structures. Is that a change?
No.
So, you know, the reason for the question is this is the third tranche for this activity. And we're approaching a million dollars.
Yep.
And it certainly needs to be done. But how is, or how will the expenditures be monitored in such a way that we're getting something, in terms of tangible impact?
Well, my understanding from the Harbor Development Committee is that basically. The state changed the rules, that they had a permitting plan in place. Use the substance or a material that had previously been allowed. And then the state said, well, no, that's really kind of a hard structure and we want you to go back to sand and. You can't get a permit based on what you proposed. You need to go back to the drawing board and come up with another proposal. And that really was an unanticipated change. And I mean, I suppose there's two ways to look at it. On the one hand, if they learn new information, then they probably should. Put out new requirements for permitting. You know, on the other hand, it's very frustrating to the firms and the committees that do this work. That start off with, you know, a goalpost here, that then gets changed over here. And that then requires additional permitting process in addition to the fact that it's been delayed. And delayed by review of the state. Not, not delay.
Well, it is a project that started in 2015, so it's, you know, we're going on nine years.
Exactly. I mean, it's.
Okay, additional questions or comments? Are you good, Joe?
Yeah, I, yeah, certainly I agree that we need to spend the money. This is a real need. It's becoming more real every day. Just around the run of a storm day. You can see the flooding. It's just the, the control of the expenditure is really what I was questioning, so that. We get some.
Well, and I would say my comment to that would be that it's better that it's the select board than the committee because the select board is an elected voting, so.
Oh, I agree, yeah.
And that's not unusual to have them be the ones that expend and authorize the contract.
And the funds that were used produce tangible benefits?
Yes, they had to do the first part of it. Right.
All right, if there are no additional comments, then I will take a motion.
So moved?
There is no motion to move?
Yes, there was. You got it. She got it.
Did you read it?
Oh, I should recommend, the town, sorry. Recommend that the town appropriate or transfer from available funds, the sum of money not to exceed $360,000. To be expended by the select board to be used for the permitting and design of inner harbor coastal structures. To address safety issues, sea level rise and harborside activities.
Thank you. If there are no additional comments, questions, then we will come to vote. Roll call vote. Nancy?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
Daveline?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Caitlin?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lindsay? Jason?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. Next item on our agenda, liaison reports. Do we have any liaison reports?
Plenary Greenham proposed their two plastic bottle band bylaw articles, municipal and retail bands in front of the select board on Tuesday. And both of them passed unanimously by the select board. So Brian and I will be working on those.
Additional? Okay. We have an update on our forecast from Sue. We have a new one coming up fairly soon, so it's perhaps a quick one.
I can't move though.
You can't move?
She's running. No, we're doing it better. On the Zoom, I can't move my computer, so can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Andy, can you hear me?
Yeah.
We will have a new forecast March 3rd. Did you see the oil bearing from the back? Sue, can you make it any larger? That's better.
Local receipts. I thought you were going to give me another pass there. Local receipts went up about almost a million dollars. And 929,500, and I'll show you what, what categories it went up. And Article 6. Went up by about $45,000 and that is due to the strike assessment. They did the calculations and unfortunately, Hingham's volume went up significantly, so. Our assessment went up about $45,000. And Article 4 has gone down. What I did is I took out all of the union contract. Usually when we start a budget process, I just take the percentage times all salaries. But now I took out all the contracts that are already in the budget. So it has gone down from the 77 down to the 391, which is. A plus of 395,000. The revenue.
Sue, wait a minute. Can you go back to that for a minute? What, it went down from what?
When we first started, it was 787,000 and now we're down to 391.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. For the revenue, the local receipts, we moved the multiple vehicle excise tax. Up by $279,050. We got the first commitment at the end of January and that is the first commitment for FY '23. And what we do is we take that and. Figure out how much percentage that it went up and then we take it for FY '24. We're comfortable putting it up to $5.3 million. Meal tax, we put up another $50,000. Right now, we are hopefully, maybe first time hit a million dollars in meal tax. So, and the last two quarters of the year are usually the lowest, so we just want to make sure we, we can hit the 950. The next one is license from permits. We increased that by 200,000, talking with building and all the other permitted departments. And we feel comfortable with putting it up to 1.5 million. And the last one is investment income. We increased that by $400,000. This is the one area that is the most volatile because interest rates, as you know, are going up. Or were going up, but they are starting to come down. It's great for the debt, but it's not great for the investment income, so. When, when interest rates go down, then the investment income is going to go down.
Sue, the, sorry, the investment income must be what, tax receipts like in overnight, so what's that coming from?
Investment income is all of the cash we have that is invested in MDT.
Which is what, MDT as well?
The mass disposable.
Something or other? So like a some form of money market situation?
I know, Treasury Office only has certain, the MDT is basically really the only place we get in the money. We can't go out and invest in any regulatory side, they can't. Cash portfolio for public debt.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I would think it's going the other way. That's the only thing. So did you raise it or you lowered it?
We raised it.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so.
Oh, yeah, no, we raised it by 400,000.
Yeah, yeah, no, the way you described it was the opposite. So it's bad for the debt, but good for the interest income.
But now that the rates are coming down. It's reversing. The rates are starting to come down.
No, they're not. No, they're not. If you're not, if it's invested in, I mean, in, you know, cash, basic money, I mean, I'll take a look at it, that matters, so I'm sorry.
Well, they're talking to capital, the capital markets.
Okay.
The rates like when it starts to come down.
Interesting, okay.
So, that's all of the local receipts that we have increased. The, the next. Forecast that we will have, basically, we'll have our new, hopefully, new our integrated insurance rates. Those come up in March 2nd. And I was already told we have a forecast meeting March 3rd. So I will be very busy March 2nd trying to get. Does anybody have any questions? That will bring our deficit, oops, sorry. Down to. 6.2.
Sue, did that, did that not include the additional ones?
I think the next forecast probably will, will count everything.
So, I mean, just back in the napkin then, is it? Then the, some of these numbers give the 2.7? On top of the 6.2, so the 1.5 on the schools, the 673, and then the 500 to capital outlay, is that a fair?
If all goes through?
Yeah, I'm just, yes, okay.
But hopefully health insurance budget comes down.
Comes down.
And there are other things that we are going to look at, excess overlay. And anything else that is corporate to date maybe. Now, if we can get those, the budget within the next couple of weeks, that might be a little bit more. Anybody have any questions?
All right.
When we get to next week, can we talk about how the proposed sustainable fund related to like the budget? That we're putting forth in, I think there's an article for that, right? How that like plays into all of this in future years?
The what?
The new fund that we're, that we're hoping to create, right?
Stabilization.
Stabilization on related to like access. When we did talk about how that plays into the budget, like going forward next year, I'm trying to wrap my head around. Is that something that plays out in '24 if it's approved, or is that at 2025?
Whenever we take on the debt, I think.
The debt though, right? I mean, we could talk about it next year.
Yeah. I think, I think all of that will come out, certainly it's not in the MOU. It's not before, at least it will come out in the MOU, which will take the current forecast, the most recent forecast. Whatever we decide is going to be the override now. And play that through the John Asher model. And see, with the goal, I think the task force setting goal of like four or five years before the next full variety.
And that's where that.
And that's where that comes in.
It's going to all hopefully extend it to like four or five years.
I think, is it next week? So next Tuesday, we'll talk about those two stabilization funds.
Great, that's perfect.
All of that come together magically.
Questions? Thank you.
Mrs. Taylor, why don't you, oh, sure. Why didn't the 2.5% increase go up by 3.3%?
Because of the debt explosion. 2.5% is on the tax levy. And then.
Right. So is it, look at tax levy, said levy is, was that? And then 2.5% increase, the increase 24 or 23 is 3.35%. increase, the increase twenty-four or twenty-three is three point three five percent?
With the add of the new growth.
Then the next line is new growth, which is down.
That's the next year, new growth. So, to get the, to get the two thousand twenty-four levy, you take the twenty-three levy and add the new growth to it.
And.
Plus the two and a half.
The new tax levy is the prior, three, prior years, three, top three lines. And then, then you take two and a half percent on that.
Yes.
All right, further questions for Sue? So, a couple of housekeeping items. We do not have minutes for the seventh, so we'll pass that on. Our next meeting is this coming Tuesday. We will have Warren Articles on Light Plan Tax Stabilization, Capital Stabilization, and Article W, Chapter fifty-nine. If you would, if anyone who, the four of you, or the three of you who have those articles, if you would get your comments out to the team as soon as possible, certainly, probably no later than Sunday, give us a chance to read them and get back to you with any edits if you have them. That would be great. We will do, maybe after that, will be the twenty-eighth, we will have a joint meeting with the select board and, I mean, just the school, the presentation, capital outlay budget, and we will cover Warren Articles O, T, U, X, and W. So, some busy times coming up on the articles, and we've sort of gone through the brain heads, which are generally the easiest ones, so these other ones will have, have more nuance to them, and so, I appreciate the work that you all have contributed, and we have more to go, so. And the last thing I would say is that for those of you who had your Warren Articles approved tonight, if there were any edits or comments that were made, please make them, slap on an approved date as a footer, and forward those articles to your editors so that they can make sure that they are in full compliance with all the guidelines, and keep them moving. Okay, questions, comments? Sorry, we are here late again this night, but we are, we are marching towards the middle of March deadline, so.
W is coming up, so.
W is coming up, yes, on the twenty-first.
Do you know what time it's still, Aaron, March time?
I do not, we're going to start with the, this budget again, so, so later, probably. She can come by soon, I thought that's, that's appropriate.
Okay.
So, if there are no additional comments, I will take a motion.
So, moved? Exactly.
Okay, we have to do a roll call vote, and, so if, if anyone is not familiar with the concept, as long as we're not all in the meeting room, we have to do a roll call, so. Sent it, yes. So, but, but Andy is not feeling well, so I appreciate him being at home, even though we miss him in the room. Nancy?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Andy?
I mean, as soon as I say aye.
Andy, we're adjourning.
He said aye, but he's on.
Okay.
Aye.
All right. Brenda?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Caitlin?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Kathy?
Yeah.
Joe?
Aye.
Lindsey?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
And Carol?
Aye. And I'm aye, too.
Are they that cold?
No. You got confused with Andy, I always follow.
Hi, we are. Thank you.